To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. All right, has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Any conflicts of interest or anything otherwise will approve the agenda as presented? All right, we'll have a reading of the and approve the minutes.
January ninth, twenty twenty four, the board of supervisors met at nine A M. with Gene Hayden, chair presiding, members president were Schultz, Dozark, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The board had a discussion with Jessica Garcia, city manager of Dennison about splitting the bills with the city of Dennison for the wellness center. A motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Rossberg to approve eight eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars from the county for the D M U proposal to go towards the wellness center. No action was taken at this time. A motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Rossberg to amend the previous motion regarding the D M U proposal to include a contingency of the approval of the cat grant. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Rossberg to approve eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars from the county for the D M U proposal to include a contingent approval of the cat grant towards the wellness center. Voting I, Rossberg, Schultz, Dozark, and Hayden, voting N, Mulbauer, motion passed unanimously. So I called someone and got help with that to make sure we were doing it correctly. So we have the original, the original motion, which no action was taken on. We had the amended, the amendment to that motion. And then we have the approval of the entire motion amended as amended. So just so.
We did it right.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And it was just making sure we noted it on the minutes correctly. So there's just a couple more things to the minutes. A motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Schultz to approve county farms review. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Mulbauer to approve lawn spray bid from Phil's Lawn Landscaping and Nursery. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozark to approve the following resolution, resolution of winning official newspapers of Crawford County for twenty twenty-four. And that's assigning the Manila Times, the Observer, and Bulletin Review have our official newspapers. Voting I, Schultz, Dozark, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg, motion passed unanimously. During the citizen input, Dan Mutt asked, how did the county farm get to this point? Schultz replied, we wouldn't get, we couldn't get the current tenant to sign off on lease. Rossberg replied, the school wasn't prepared to develop a program. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned eleven fifty-eight A M. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty P M. Proceeding to next meeting. I think so. Did I what? Oh, huh, we didn't type anything out?
Thank you, Terry.
That one was boring.
All righty. Do who had any meetings they want to talk about today, who would like to go first?
The snow, I didn't really have anything. I'm supposed to have, once again, a restful meeting last night. And postponed it, actually, we canceled it for the month of January. He's gonna have one in February. So that was all I had.
Kyle, what'd you have other than the snow?
Well, I did not. Think back, you know, last week, I had a conservation board meeting prior to our last week's meeting. But we kind of touched on a lot of that stuff with the budget, when Chris is in it. There's none of the budget. The things that we talked about there, so. Yes, solid waste meeting tonight, seven o'clock. And yes, another meeting Friday. We gotta get some rates set for the city so they know for their budget, solid waste, so. I think Chuck said he sent the one for the county rates already, so. Probably see that for a figure. I don't see it changing. We got pretty good balances, but we're gonna have to replace the J C B, I think.
They gone up.
Yeah, yeah, I think the last one we replaced was like a hundred and thirty thousand. So I probably wouldn't be spending two hundred thousand now.
So do you negotiate the rates with the carriers on a weekly basis or?
We do get, every year we get, we get something from landfill and Carol and with Earl blockers. And we kind of base the rates. Lock them in usually with landfill for five years. They'll come pay so much a ton. And we'll try to lock them in with them, we'll negotiate, we do that for five years. And we just kind of set our rates accordingly to, we're not gonna make money, it's just you gotta keep so much money on hand and for post closure of the cells out there. Just equipment labor.
So for the city of Dennison, it's just a rate per month per household?
Yeah, yeah.
And then they bill out accordingly?
Yep, yep. Yeah, we just go off the census of each community, whatever that is. There's so much, or a bill over there, so much of it, basically. And it seems to work.
Kyle, how long have you been on that board, just out of curiosity?
Since I got on the board of supervisors.
So it's been, I remember back when we still.
Before they had garbage. Yeah, yeah, no, that was a good decision at the time to go to a transfer station and dump station.
But the cost of everything just keeps going up and up and up, and we're always on breaks.
No, we don't, and we're responsible for that garbage, it's even buried up there until the D N R and E P A says we're not responsible for it anymore.
County sold that property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We should go drive around out there someday.
It's a trail, you can go for a walk.
You can go for a walk, I went to buy it this morning, but maybe mom.
I remember taking.
But no, it's, uh, I think some of it's now managed by peasants forever, kind of help out with some of it. You know, obviously, Stine's got his shooting range out there and.
Remember plastic bags all along the fence line and just, yeah.
No, I, yeah. That's why we always kept the county farm due, from what I was told, was just in case we needed to purchase more ground for dumping garbage.
That's pretty smooth.
And then as far as, it's probably better hiring Earl blockers than trying to do that on their own with the equipment.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we have no, it works pretty good. They leave a truck sit there while one's getting dumped. There's usually, there's two trucks dedicated to our landfill, so. Travis backs one in, fills it up, pulls it out, calls them, they send a guy up, come get her. You know, we have to do the full-time employees sitting there. Which, that's a good point. We're trying to figure out a way to have another full-time employee out there. We can reach across, train at scale house operations and try to figure out how to keep them moving. They would just buy her on the truck.
Two-part.
You need to.
Carroll County landfill is digging a new cell.
Are they? Well, they better, they take the garbage for like six counties.
They got a lot of years to go out there.
Yeah, and they've got a huge area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's expensive to have garbage.
But it'll be interesting someday, they do run out of area, then what?
Yeah. Go back dumping in the rivers like they did years ago.
I don't think that'll be all of it.
But yeah, I mean, since the recycling started back in the nineties and that, you know, it's well worth it. You don't see it dumping the creeks and the streams like you used to.
Do we get rid of all of our recycling stuff at Carol? Okay, so they take the batteries and everything that I.
Uh, you know, I guess I don't know batteries. I think there's a different outfit that comes to do that, and appliances are in a different outfit. But like the plastics and all that, that go in your recycling bin, and that all goes to Carol and gets sorted or bored. Your plastics, like tin cans, I guess. No, I, they are starting a new battery, like the double A's and lithium batteries that were.
Prius batteries.
Battery collection cans like in city halls and things.
Probably a triple A sometimes.
Cause they like the wall batteries and stuff there. The way they're disposed of is.
That was the.
And start fires just by sitting there, yes. Anyway.
So your scale house gals are both, are they both gals that work part-time?
We, we transitioned to one full-time.
One full-time, okay. They used to be part-time.
Yep, they were both part-time and.
What are the part-time person that comes out there?
Yeah, we still have one to fill in like every other Saturday.
Yeah, that would be.
So Megan goes out and does fill in.
My Megan?
Is there ever any talk about just new technology and how to handle?
Way to cross.
Waste and garbage and?
Uh, no, but sometime I think that's gonna have to be.
You know, with how fast technology moves, you'd think that they constantly be improving how we can manage waste.
Yeah, I think there's probably some. There's gotta be some better avenue of taking that waste and converting it to ten or some of them. I think, you know, you go over in European countries, the Norwegians and the Sweden's, you watch videos on that, when there's garbage all gets turned into baggage in some of them. Seems like they're, oh, I must not have, maybe they got more restrictions or less restrictions. Pretty frugal for their, the Norwegians and the different Sweden's and about everything, so. Anyways, that's about all I have, not much.
All right, Kyle, what'd you have?
Do you know, actually, I missed my EMS, Naco EMS, you know, it's part of the rural development. But it's the, developing the EMS stuff across the country, actually, the whole. I missed it because I was out rescuing trucks. But the, I haven't got my brief on it.
Do they record that stuff sometimes?
Yeah, they don't, well, they don't record it, but I'll get a, you know, minutes of it. And I was going over my ones for, some of them I have trouble getting into, the team meetings, I don't know. I do fine with Zoom, but team meetings, sometimes I have all the time getting into them. Oh, I don't know what the deal is just with them. I mean, I did, like, C D C uses team, I never have trouble getting into them. In any event, there was also a meeting for the military veterans affairs last week. Nothing really earth-shattering in that one. They discussed the stuff on, on the continuing resolution and stuff up. Let me see if I can find the numbers. The defense, in the Defense Act, you know, and that's all gotta be done by the nineteenth. Obviously, our Congress is good at like the eleventh hour, we're doing things, but. One point five nine trillion in that. And eight, eight eighty-six billion for defense and then seven hundred and seventy-three billion for non-defense. And that to C R, so a little bit of a raise in the defense spending. I have actually had a few people stop me at the caucus last night, and they were talking about what we pay our soldiers and, and how we're caring for them and, and stuff like that, you know. And the guy asked me a little bit about the V A system and, and I did a little bit of digging last night when I got home, cause he asked me some stuff.
Flip those over and see if you can design it.
What's that?
I just asked her to flip them over to see if there was a place to sign on the other side.
Anyway.
Can't remember.
When I was digging, I actually found a word that they, we discussed here last, last week. The V A doctors, you know, if somebody dies outside of the hospital and they bring it in for, you know, they investigate it and they just think to them that, deem that it was natural causes, they still won't sign the death certificates a lot of times because it died outside of the hospital. I don't mean, and I'm guessing if somebody was getting brought in, had a heart attack at home and got brought in, that's what I'm guessing. But it creates a lot of, can't get the funeral lined up, can't get the benefits packages rolling and all kinds of stuff like that. So that's something that is actually being addressed and we're supposed to talk to them about out there when we're out there in February. Otherwise, you know, most of it, they just lined up some new C V S O, this C V S O act. They got just to wind up the people that are gonna be talking on behalf of Naco out there. And the different commissioners and what have you. So everybody's just kind of preparing, most of the meetings are geared towards preparing for the legislative conference. It's not a lot of new information, other stuff like the C R or something like that, continuing regulation. And then just what the Health Steering Committee, what their, you know, proposed resolutions and stuff that they're bringing forward for during the legislative session. Otherwise, there really wasn't a lot from theirs. I mean, just people talking, you know, they had some speakers on, on a couple of different things, but the state of the American veteran, this lady, I mean, she got on there and she talked about the health and pretty much stuff that we know. I mean, it was interesting, I guess, but since most of the time is being spent to get ready for the legislative conference, I suspect they're kind of grabbing people last minute to be our speakers, but. And then, like I said, I didn't get to get in on the EMS one yesterday, you know, they're talking about whether it's, you know, cause since Crawford County is actually looking at whether or not we're gonna create a tax for emergency services and put it on a petition for the next ballot. So since they're doing it, I mean, that, there's a lot of places out there that are doing that. And actually drove through Harlan yesterday, I had to go down there, where one of the trucks was iced up and it's airlines and, and like where their ambulance shipped, and that reminded me that Shelby County had their own ambulance service and stuff like that, you know.
Well, they still do or not?
I don't know how they're doing that.
About it closed down.
Well, it sold out, well, nobody bought it.
Right.
So what are they using now?
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's what made me start thinking about that yesterday. I had no idea, you know, I don't know.
I did see that, no, I guess, Duane sent an email saying the House is trying to got a bill on for a tax. Basically, we're trying to do tax credit for.
Veterans?
No, for.
Oh, for the fire EMS? Okay, for volunteers?
Yeah, there's a five thousand dollars.
Buy a thousand dollar credit?
Yeah, if you own a house.
If you own a house, where's that down at the state house now?
In the district you serve in, so. I mean, a lot of the questions that we could answer was, you know, how fair is that? But state, I just, I'd like to see them pass it first, but I mean, I've been talking about it for ten years.
Yeah, well, I like when they.
If they push it on to us, it wouldn't be a big deal, so.
They pass something that would throw it on our back, you know, I mean, I get you.
Well, we found out that wasn't so black and white either, it was very difficult to how to make it fair.
The questions that we had, you know, what if somebody serves on one district or whatever squad, but lives on another or lives out of the county? Cause that happens on your border towns quite often, you know. You know, live within the county, the state will be able to just put a blanket over it all. Make a word, but. Well, I mean, there'll still be some of the questions we had won't get answered. You know, still no fair to the people that are serving, but rent a house.
Yeah, yeah, some of the, yeah, the gray area that we had.
We had some trying to keep it all fair, you know, and in trying to keep it fair for young ones and people, you know, the guys that are serving and don't own a house, that's just really difficult town.
Well, and there's the, I'll be the first to admit, there's people that are on that. I don't know that they're on, if they're gonna have the blue light, but you know, they're not. You know, it had to have some scrutiny by the authority having jurisdiction if they qualified for, for that tax credit.
And we're gonna leave that up to, you know, each department.
Can't just have, well, I'm gonna join, but I'm not gonna participate in anything ever.
Well.
We tried to tie the knots to it, but we didn't like them. We'll see how good they can do with that, let's just keep.
Yeah, let's see how they.
Let's just keep updated on it.
Yeah.
Hopefully they do come up with the perfect solution to it.
Yeah, and then other than that, I, you know, other people calling about snow stuff. Know if their road was cleared, when we're gonna get there and questions that were kind of hard to answer, guys were out working out.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, most of the time they weren't impatient, they just wondered, you know, like yesterday's call I had, that was a lady that wanted to call somebody to come up and clean up theirs cause it sounded like she was a little older or something, maybe they didn't have their own equipment anyway. So they're gonna have somebody come over and clean them out, but they wanna make sure that the road was open for them to even get there, you know. So I mean, that was about it.
I didn't have a call and complain and they're not.
Nope, I didn't really have anybody that was frustrated or. I did, I do, I do think that Kyle made an excellent point as we're in our budgets here. The snow has grabbed the rock pretty hefty, and so we've been busting it off and moving, rocks going with it. So I gotta assume the roads are getting the same effect.
Yeah, yeah, I drive in the country, it's pretty brown, but they got pushed back so far, there's no, no fall of their own.
No, they're trying to clean it.
That wind just, I mean, that was, you clean it off and it would blow right back shut. That was the biggest, and why keep opening it up if you know it's gonna close again?
These drifts are harder than you did in May, they're trying to push this courthouse over.
Yeah.
They are. They got their, they got their work cut out.
That's.
Most of the time they give them, these aren't giving at all.
I talked to Henry on the way up here, he had, he said, he talked to a couple of different people in the country, your farmers. He said he asked them nicely, bottom them, you know, they're pushing their yard up, pushing the snow across the road and then leave a pile on the edge of the road and then our ditch on the other side. And it's not a big pile, but it's, you know, a couple bucks, but he said, it's like hitting an ice. So, you know, he asked me, please just push it somewhere else, you know.
When you hit it with the maintain.
When I come by with the maintain with my wing out, he's like, man, does that jar my maintainer, cause it's just, you know, pile of ice now, you know.
We'll be breaking our stuff.
Well, unfortunately, you know, the panic, not panic, but the mission to get a little path out to everybody. Sometimes it bites you in the ass, cause you hit that snow once and then, and just make a small trail through, now you got a number of ice.
Now you got crap to make, yeah.
Right, you got fire on your hands.
But I think the guys sure worked hard and did a good job of getting everybody opened up, at least to get a pass out.
Well, I, I don't know if everybody realizes, not all of them went home, you know, it's.
Sleeping in the shops.
That was pretty, that's a great crew that's gonna sacrifice and.
Sean Crunkie told me that, I talked to him on the phone too, Saturday or Sunday or Thursday it is anymore, but he just said how, how the guys really take it to heart that I wanna get out there and do my job and, and the willingness to stay in a shop.
That's amazing, it really is, so, yeah, kudos to our guy.
So, well, as we were talking about the service of government employees, you know, and they epitomize that, that's the way. When you see them do that, you're like, doesn't everybody do that?
No, no, but you, you know, they get this good, that's just a good team. I mean, you know, there might be some people that criticize Paul or something, but most teams are a mirror of, you know, the one you work for, and he's up and at it every morning right away, and so the team gets at it, and they're good people. You know, so they just.
They don't get a stipend to stay in a crappy old shop, you know, D V or no. Right, they might have a microwave if somebody brought one in.
Yeah, there's not like any cozy place to hang out there. Even the good break.
They even have a coffee maker, so.
Have they brought one in themselves?
Yeah, and Paul has to make the decision of when to pull them off and I, whenever we get those, you know.
Some of them are outdated, but the boiler shops, they used to get snowdrifts in the office area. People, they stay in there.
Well.
But they used to go out with no cabs on the stuff either and push snow.
Red and Matt, on the weekend, like that, boy, that'd be miserable. I was sitting there thinking this morning, God, it'd be a good morning to have one of them heated steering wheel.
I knew part of it.
I was just happy my pickup started.
But we don't drive that winter nights.
I, I've actually, all weekend, I plugged mine in it inside the garage, still plugged it in. Boy, it she popped off like it was summertime. Probably drive a bit easier.
Since Thursday, if I'm not running. It is what it is, no, the guys did it, I mean, get some new guys out there that are getting baptized by fire here, unfortunately.
Sometimes that's not all bad either, you just, you go through it.
You get through the worst of it, you know, everything else is bright sunny day.
You can train and talk about it all you want, but actually doing it, best teacher.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, no, I.
A lot of skills will get honed over this.
That did work for us up there some.
How you done?
I think that that's pretty much it covers.
Give David a chance?
Sure, I did have region twelve last Thursday, and we had quite a bit of business to do. We had our executive board meeting, and then we also had our development corporation meeting, executive board meeting, a lot of those New Year paperwork stuff, policy council, we reappointed all those, so you're back.
And again. Congratulations.
Thanks.
They asked us, and June, and of course, the other one is Linda.
Yeah, getting that Sarah.
And Sarah, up for it, I said, yep. So you're back in it. We did have, Steve Kettering was on the loan review committee, he is getting off that committee. Do you remember Steve from Zach County?
Steve Ketterman, I know that.
Good name, but I can't get a face right.
But he is retiring from that committee, so then Jason Tiefenthaler is the new appointment, just little changes there. We got through the executive report and our transfer report, transit was down a little bit in December, but that's pretty typical for being cold weather. And so we had, we were on a search for a new auditor. Our auditor is retiring and it's very difficult to find an auditor that wants to do federal funds like what region twelve has.
I suppose, yeah.
We reached out, did not have very many responses back, except we only had one bid back.
Oh, brother.
We did accept it, we thought about maybe trying to send out an R F P with a couple other COGS, seeing if that could entice by, you know, economy of scale. But then we decided to approve it and go with the one that we did get a bid from out of Des Moines.
How was the cost comparatively to the year before?
But from what we had bid outside a couple of years ago, it's in line, but it's still not cheap.
So I just wonder, you know, like West Central Community Action, they have an auditor, and that would be the same type of, if they could audit that, you think they would be able to do region twelve?
A lot of our local ones, even Roma Belankine said, nope. When you get into the federal funds, it's a whole different animal.
And I think one of the big deals would be when you have those. And I think one of the big deals would be when you have those big jobs and they involve the Davis Bacon Wages. To make sure that everybody that was on that, uh, job for more than ten minutes has all of their payroll and everything in there exactly right. And that is their big holiday.
So we thought about extending our search and maybe going farther out or doing some different things, but then on the other hand, we're also up against a time crunch and. We were worried that if we don't lock in the one we did get, we could be, what do we do without an auditor? And we didn't wanna be in that position, so we approved it, it is a firm out of Des Moines.
I never thought them big outfits would be scared of a little federal paperwork. Yeah, we thought it was a, it's the whole of that deal, let's see, might take longer. Law or whatever in the garden somewhere, I just, if I'm to turn that down, it's like, surprising me.
Um, we also did, uh.
How much there is to it.
Rick's yearly review. He scored very highly, like he always does, Rick is one heck of a director at Region Twelve. High marks, this is his, John Mira out of Green County is our chair of the board, he put this review together for us. I just, I think the overall theme of Rick's evaluation was. Appreciate how aggressive Region Twelve is and how flexible they are, they're always seem to be willing to. Get out there and get, get themselves up front, kinda like Paul is with some of the funds he brings in. And how can we best use it, how can we serve our region, what can we do, um, with that, I thought it was very interesting. I have a map here of a lot of the different projects, and it has all the different dots, and if you look. Our region, just look at how our region is just filled with.
Yeah, I can believe that.
And you know, even get over here, you know, touring around Des Moines.
Manona County, some of them don't even belong to anything like that. They send their money to Sioux City, and it's the Sioux Land Betterment, and you know, all that money goes to Sioux City. You know, that's just fine, cause I've just been reworking with.
And to me, you know, you, kinda, I guess, look at different areas, this is how regions should work.
Exactly.
You know, it brings everything to our Sioux County region, we're all focused on our area, that is what mental health should be.
When you look at like Midas up there around Fort Dodge, there's nothing going on. And Des Moines area, not much different.
But yet, what our regions have, not our COGS, but what are some of our other regions like mental health have turned into is, you have this big area. And everything goes to Sioux City, or everything goes to Des Moines, or, and that, that isn't a region, that's.
No, that's just give us your money so we can develop our county here a little bit, or city.
That's what it looks like then.
So, just interesting, but.
I think they just hand their money over too.
We're very.
Didn't have forty-five minute argument about it, like we did.
Think we're very lucky with the team we have at, at Region Twelve.
What's amazing is how much it just has knowledge, it's not looking at any paperwork, it can tell you every grant and every, you know. The pros and cons and the ins and the outs, it's just, uh, very.
Well, even with that, I, I think Rick does a very good job of finding the key roles. In the people underneath of them, you know, with, we have Matt and Mark and Scott Stapp, which is the team that he has. Helping him with all the different things they do, very impressive. Um, we did also, we talked about, we did approve two more RLFs, um. One was in Lakeview or Milton's on Main. Coffee shop.
Milton's on Main.
On Main, and then there was another one, out of Nora, B and B Marketplace, moved into town. Are alone for, um, flowers and coffee shop and, you know, main street business. And they were previous wedding business, kinda couple of wedding stuff, uh, she was doing it out of acreage, out of town. Stop building in thousand, um. West Liberty, we had a little bit of update there, we're gonna be supplying a hundred percent of Walmart sandwiches, pre-made turkey sandwiches.
Really? Cool.
Walmart?
They are so demanding though, Walmart is, I mean, Smithfield's doing some of their, uh. Probably doing a lot of their Prop Twelve stuff out in California, oh my god, you gotta click. Walmart can be, uh, well, they got a lot to do, so they gotta be demanding, that's interesting they got that.
You know, West Liberty seems to be very aggressive on trying to stay on the cutting edge, and that's kinda the way it seems. That it's going with some of these facilities, especially for them where it's more. Hands off, pre-made, longer lasting products, shelf life's longer, yep. Pre-made, you people walk in, I mean, I hope the sandwich already made, I'm just gonna grab a sandwich.
See that way where they got the little soups and stuff on the underside here in town, they got the sandwiches all made up and whatever, I wonder if that's probably what.
In Walmart?
Yeah, Walmart here, and then the big ones obviously are a lot more elaborate.
Um, the one loan consideration we did not retain them. Was a Murphy's Farm meat out of Jefferson, and it's John from Green County that's our chair, knows of them. Just didn't quite fit our full criteria, we didn't have a recommendation from the loan review committee on it, one way or the other, um, but it sounded like. It's a guy's own meat, hogs, cattle, typical cattle, and that he's just. Butchering them for himself and then selling them himself.
Kinda like our vintage beef and.
So, really didn't, you know, maybe they would do a few outside people, but it wasn't a typical locker where it opens up in.
So he's applying for a loan?
Yes.
To do what, what was his?
Um, wanted to build a bigger facility, locker facility, but.
Dressed are looking to put in a big walk-in freezer to store all their, I mean, they're moving a lot of product, is that something they're gonna play?
Well, we, they could, um, they could. The thing that we kinda are, are waiting to, I guess, there's questions we haven't sent out of. If it's, are you moving product to us locally, is, or, you know, we still wanna see. Other people, other farmers, I mean, the idea behind it is to enhance producers' availability to market their beef or hogs or. But if it's all tied into a closed system.
Yeah. See where that doesn't check all the boxes, but is that part of that locker?
Right.
That multi-million dollar locker thing that was out there, is that part of that?
No, it's.
Nothing different?
Different than that, here's this, um, it's. Or I think we kind of, well, if it is only one individual and it's benefiting them. But is the, what they're producing benefiting the people in the community, I mean, are people going there to buy all their beef? Is it benefiting?
So is this one?
There's questions we have, we don't have a recommendation quite yet, so we just. Sitting it out a little more.
Cause it's not like, I mean, if you're purchasing the beef, if you don't purchase it there, you're gonna purchase it somewhere. You know, so you're not bringing something different to the table, in, in my mind, that's expanding. Retail ability of the people to buy something that they can't buy anywhere else, something they can buy wherever they wanna buy it. That's a good point, I mean, what they're doing, definitely, I mean, they're just selling their own meat. Right, don't give no option for anybody else to bring it, right.
I thought like, a big part of this was to create more markets for our local farmer.
That, exactly.
And so like, you know, lockers that'll cut meat up for them, you know, and then you can turn around and do like dresses and.
Well, they might be able to apply for some other, well, which are Region Twelve for small business.
That's also, that was brought up too, that it might, they might have to do a different route.
Yeah, it wouldn't be necessarily through that locker. Yeah, yeah, makes sense.
So they're asking for a million too, is that?
But you're right, the idea for the meat and poultry loan fund, it is to expand the local markets for local producers.
For the producers, yeah, and then you can always do like the dresses do, bring it back home and market it immediately, you know.
But true, yeah.
Most of the time, they don't, don't like the dresses, they sell steers that are out there, or effort that are out in the yard, and then, a lot of time, but then they still have other meat that they.
I'm not sure how they all operate, you can go buy a whole head out there if you want or not, but. Works good for Keegan Hall.
And I don't know, how does, how does Kelly work his with GLC, I mean, I'm not real a hundred percent certain either. Or something that does the cutting for him or.
We have others, and all of that do the same thing, you know, they have their own better beef, but I think they work through Arcadia to have the.
Our Arcadia locker. How we do, but that's the thing, is we wanted to have more lockers or small meat plants, you know, and even if they're. Not necessarily a. Harvest facility, looking for nice words, a harvest facility, but still would be a processing facility, like you said with the sandwiches, I mean. That moves the meat, cause your, your ultimate goal is to make sure that meat's got someplace to go, so you don't get a backlog, which then turns the prices down on that.
That's what interested me, and it really interested me about West Liberty, that, how they're really trying to stay on the forefront, the cutting edge of. What are consumers needing, wanting, buying, how do we change our business model?
To meet consumer demand.
Right, and then that, you know, really trickles down to our Iowa producers, because if they move more product, more turkey, the. The producers produce more, you know.
And, and, and even like, when you're moving more pork or you're moving more chicken. It's, 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 it's got that much less on the shelf at the Walmart, so that's, there's more room for a pork or something or a beef. And the more meat we move, period, the better it is for all of our farmers, I mean, you know, you get a backlog, that's what really kinda hurt the pork market. Was, you know, there was, our overseas markets got cut at the same time that the chickens came back to maybe in flu, and the turkeys came back, so all of a sudden, there's all that more meat at the store. Well, it drove the prices of everything down, so that's what's kinda been tough for our pork industry, only one that's really been better off, or been, been well off is the beef industry. And that's just because it takes so long to develop the next dinner, the next, you know, the next crop.
But even, to me, the beef, the beef has had quite a sell-off here in the last quarter, but. Part of that is, as USDA or, or federal really need to step up and not allow. You know, the South American beef, pork, poultry to come into America, US. Without the same standards we have here, all that does is dilute our, our markets, oh, you know, floods them with. Poor quality product.
Yep, that's a great point, Dave.
Really put a lot of work into this report, there's a lot of information in here, um. They just didn't like that it wasn't getting to enough, uh, consumers of that, that kind of a short take of it.
Well, yeah, for the, for the meat and poultry loan fund, really is what. You said it well, it's kinda meant to broaden your markets for your local producers, that there's.
Give more options for the local producers a place to harvest their animals, or give them, where he's looking for more. I'm, I got all my stuff, I just wanna help sell them the meat.
Right, I, I need a better, better kill facility, whatever, marketing.
But I'm not taking anybody, I'm not buying any cattle.
So that really kinda throws him.
Worked good for him.
Which, that's why the loan review committee, cause we don't, the loan review committee does a lot of the legwork before the board of directors gets to see it. And then they give us the approval, and we have never, I mean, they, a very good job that they go through with fine tooth comb. It almost throws that into a different loan category.
Yep, same way here.
And they have options, but it's.
That's the nice part about Region Twelve, there's options for you out there.
Right.
I mean, and they just, like, you can't get in the RLF, you're done, you don't know, there's RLFs, there's.
I used to sit on the review, you know, here.
Does a good job developing.
You had to turn your banker's hat around, you couldn't use the same criteria that we would use to approve a loan at the bank. And that was difficult for me, uh, to try to prove something that didn't fit into the normal, how are you gonna pay that back and, you know, so.
Right, okay, and actually, Region Twelve. Does better and it looks better, uh, on a bigger picture when we get those funds out. You know, if we sit on them and do nothing, then like the USDA loans and grants and things like that, saying, well, you're not doing that.
That's exactly right, so, you know.
Like up here in this one, where there's three dots, and then we're RLFs, and that's all that's in that huge.
You don't use the money, how you go back and ask for more again next year?
And it's well spread out, that's what I really like, I mean, the whole region didn't serve as well.
Oh, right, on time.
I really enjoy that.
We've been talking about roads most of the morning here, what a great job your crew has done. Everybody here keeps, seemed to, just kept people wondering when they were gonna get out, not everybody really complaining that's not getting done on time and.
Yeah, we, we, uh.
Guys staying at the shop and all that good stuff.
We didn't have complaints, so that's, so that was kinda nice.
Everybody understood, this was a unique, you know, with that winter, it was so cold.
Yeah, yeah, it was a good old fashioned Iowa winter storm, so. I didn't see a state truck just south of town, I wonder if he built up. Yeah, I don't know, Houston's sitting there, it's sitting there for a couple days, but, yeah, you know, I mean, everything. Any major issues with anything.
But it all held up, nothing broke down out there.
Couple, we, we had a couple of hoses break, you know, there's, there's eight trucks that are out there. When they're off the road, then there's eight unloaders, and then there's fifteen motor graders, and we have one motor grader that's down, a fuel pump's out, so we didn't have the sixteenth one out, but. That's just a lot of equipment going, and so we had two broken hydraulic hoses, a blower motor and one of the cabs and motor grader. And we got one motor grader, the transmission's kinda acting up, but we're not sure what's going on there, but he's still able to operate, but other than that, I mean.
Was that better cold?
Pretty good, it's, it's good to have good.
That's not very many breakdowns.
Twenty-three below zero, yeah, or Sunday morning, you know, and so, you know, it's, it's really important to have the right fueling machines. You know, now some of the outlying shops, those barrels, you know, you're, you're adding number one into a barrel that's got some number two in it. So probably the only problem we're really having right now is that the filters, the pumps on the outlying shop tanks are becoming a problem, so we've had to shuttle. Number ones, cause this has pretty much straight number one down here, which is good, because the city pulls out of there, the ambulance pulls out of there. They all fly out there, and so we start that conversion like in the middle of November. But, uh, it doesn't roll as fast in the outlying tanks, and so there could be, you know, some, so the filters plug on the.
We've had the same issue.
And, uh, you know, you can get about twenty gallons out, you put a new filter on, you get another twenty gallons, and that wax fills up in that filter, and then you're done, so.
We had to get a whole chop chop, put some DPA in there.
We're dumping a little conditioner in the tanks just to kinda.
That stuff works.
You know what's amazing to me?
How much debt you put in?
Fast you get everybody on it. When I first moved out to the Coen Farm or on W Avenue. I remember my grandpa saying.
Oh, that's a terrible place.
Be prepared to be snowed in for two weeks, and I thought, oh, you, no way, but back then, you just didn't have the equipment. Today, I mean, you, you got all the roads open in two days.
Yeah, we're fortunate, cause we do, I mean, you know, good equipment, and, and Bob Lorman put it best. Bob didn't say a whole lot, but he said, here, we buy a new motor grader, he says, there's nothing those people down there in the township like more than seeing a brand new cat motor grader. Opening their road except in a store. Cause we're buying one, you know, but it's true, I mean, you got, we, we have good equipment, dedicated employees, and that all helps out.
This is the time of year that six by six is really.
It does. Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, and, and a lot of these guys, I mean, you know, you take about the top five off, and everybody else has been here ten years or less. And a lot of those guys, five years or less, they haven't seen anything like this, you know, and so, it's new experience, but in, in spite of that.
They did good.
They did a really good job, so, really proud of it, um, you know, and. And, uh, you know, we had, uh, you know, a number of guys, you know, spend the night, two nights in the shop. And Saturday, we had to pull off early just because it was nasty, you know, and then they stay in the shop all day, cause, cause they had to be there, we had two guys take the machines to their home. Put them in the shed, just so they could, you know, get out and go on the road right away, and we had several people stay with other people, so they. Pretty good group of dedicated guys that, uh, you know, no complaint, they just did what needed to be done, so.
Pulled it into Leonard's heated shop and stayed right there.
Stayed right there.
Take off and work.
You know, I mean, in, in that way, you can get going, and, you know, there's still, we got lots of issues out there, there's still lots of snow to go.
Lots thrown away.
Yeah, so this, this week, this whole week, the guys have pushed back, and this is where the unloaders are really helpful, you know, we don't put a lot of hours on the unloaders. But when we have something like this that are really important, we put. You know, we don't put a lot of hours on the unloaders, but when we have something like this that are really important, we put all the chains on them and you go out and you start pushing it up.
All because that wind was like. That was the bad part, the wind.
It was terrible. Yeah. And bitter cold, but all in all, you know, everybody got, got out and back in. And most people, if not, everybody is out now. So, you know, kind of the, you know, with the long hours, some guys have asked, you know, we, we usually limit the 40 hours of comp time, you know, is there a possibility of. In the June, they could have it used up. I mean, a lot of these newer guys would really appreciate that, you know, as opposed to taking overtime. So. I told them I'd run it by the board and see once.
And that's what the policy is, is to have it down to forty by end of June.
By end of June. So we could just kind of allow them to go up a little higher for.
You can. I mean, that's, that's what the policy is.
You know, when I was a secretary room employee, it was nice to have an option to bank some more.
Yeah, especially a lot of these guys that don't have a lot of time, a lot of vacation, they'd like to have a couple of, two, three extra days of vacation time. Their comp time as opposed to taking the overtime. So they'll have the option.
They manage it good too. So that's.
Yeah, we, we don't ever let anybody get too carried away.
I'm not either.
I should go ahead.
Yeah. And so I'll, I'll go ahead and let them know that in the check. I'm a solid thank you. I'm telling them to put their checks. The other thing I'd like to do, and I, I know it's, you know, it's hard, but I want to do like an appreciation luncheon for them in March. When we do our safety meeting, we're going to have a work zone safety. And I was telling Kyle, I said, I might do something special this time. If there's any way the county can help out with it or not, but if not, we'll just do it. You know, just to show some appreciation. They, they do a good job and I think, you know, they, they like a thank you now and then and a little gesture of, hey, you're. You're doing a good job. We appreciate what you do.
That goes a long ways.
It does. It really does, you know, and so, so anyhow, you know, it's part of our job. It's what we do.
What are you thinking as far as from March, you're catering something?
Staley's coming in here, chicken dinner. You know, they're always here, you know, and, and, and I know, you know, this is, you know, you know, like even Friday, you know. All the other county employees get to go home. Our guys are still in, you know, they're still there working.
Yeah.
And, you know, and so I think just those little things, you know, that's not a huge thing, but it's just a little, hey, you know what? We appreciate what you do.
I like it.
I like it. I think the folks that were sitting by waiting for their road to get open and when they saw them coming, chicken dinner.
Well, yeah, a little something.
We're running chicken dinner.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. So with every bad thing that happens, there's always an opportunity. So there's an opportunity to go out here and out, find out all these snow traps and take foot forms. You go out to that person that's a quarter mile from the intersection that could get them out, you know, we, all we did was a little bit of grading. They'd be out and get them signed up.
I got some things like it signing me up with the.
Yeah, and, and seriously, I mean. When I first started, all we did were gravel roads. We never touched a level B road. Okay. That's all we did. And I mean, the first bureau I started was in twenty, two thousand, two thousand one. Terrible. Snow done election date on November 30 and it never left till April. And we, we did a ton of snow travel grading projects. That's all we did for years. And, you know, then we slowly kind of went into the level Bs and we made some tremendous progress there. But I was telling the guys, I said, here's an opportunity now that, you know, it's, it's there. The evidence is there.
Drive them up and talk about it. So, you know, even if it's a quarter mile stretch, I mean, a lot of these will make a huge difference.
If you can just take that one area, you know, now every road's got a problem. Almost every road you got. But there are some of the worst ones you can just kind of map out. So we're going to try to map those out and, and pick off those.
That's just like using one forty-one, for instance. We only had like three and a half, four, it's like four snow traps between Charter Oak and here. If the state got rid of them, they'd probably be able to always clear it off with a truck and never have to even bring a snowball.
North of you. Why that one forty-one was closed because the bank on the side of the road is like four foot high. But they, two years ago, they had all the equipment sitting right there and they failed to take that off.
Yeah. So, you know, and I went to Sioux City yesterday to get a part for the guys and had that one forty-one there, that section between. Uh, Smithland and where is it there? No, between Smithland and Maplethorne.
Where's graded that all back?
Graded that all back?
That's what I mean. You find them, like you said, find that little section where you. You know, I mean, because we probably don't have a ton of them anymore, other than on some of them level Bs that are really, you know, the old dirt that really needs some work, but.
Yeah, the level Bs that we graded.
But nobody lives on them either. But you know, that still is people like, you know, the one we did over there next to the McCall property, you know, and. Gosh, you know, I'm, I'm sure Todd could get over to check cattle over together at his old place, you know, and. That makes a difference, you know, I'm being able to get out and check cattle earlier.
Yeah.
See, we were actually talking about that. How much gravel do you think we're losing because it's stuck into this snow so bad?
It's hard to guess, you know, it probably looks like it's a lot more than it really is because it froze down. I mean, the moisture we got, we got an inch and a half to two inches of rain. Right around Christmas time. That was the best thing that could have happened because we got that moisture and a lot of it was, you know, down. You're still going to have some that's up in the edge that's going to get wind on. It'll look a lot worse maybe than you think, but, but yeah, you, you're going to lose some. Uh, I can't tell you exactly how much.
I mean, I just didn't know if you thought it looked like it was sticking bad. Because like when I cleaned my lot and Kyle's mentioned his too. You know, you bust, bust up some of them chunks and on the bottom of it was rust.
Yeah.
Pushing that into a pan, I'll be able to pull mine back out across there in the spring, but it's a little hard to get it back out of the ditch in the spring.
It is. Yeah, especially when they wing it, it's.
Fifty-six years of putting gravel on these roads that you think that it should just be solid.
It's bolt rock. Yeah, yeah.
It's not that.
It's not. Yeah. You know, so, so anyhow, that's kind of really the, the project on E sixteen lets tomorrow. So we'll be anxious to see how that turns out. The other projects we're getting closed out, the shop down in Manila. Boy, it's nice. Nice to have nice shops, you know, and. Get that one done in Charter Oak. I mean, some of these shops are really getting old.
Yeah. Tell the board here on the Bueller Shop, you know, a guy used to stay in there, you know. And we got snowdrifts in the, in the office area.
That was terrible. Yeah.
I mean, we made great strides on. There's still the Miller shop in Charter Oak where it's still are, are nothing bragging about.
Well, even the shop down here, you know, we're throwing chains on the loaders over in that loader shop and the range in there is terrible. I mean, there's big puddles of water and you're laying it. The other guys are underneath there trying to get chains on.
I need somebody to go in there and take that all out and re slope it and pave it.
Yeah.
Well, having a good shop.
Start over.
That's just as, just as important as it's part of the equation of, you know, with good equipment, good personnel, good shops. It just helps the whole process.
Helps the whole process, Dave. You're right. You give, you know, you give a person a good place to work out of, good equipment and.
Helps attitude.
It helps attitudes a lot. Yeah.
Yeah, enthusiasm.
It's dawned on me. Sort of like emergency management. I know Charter Oak's got some fire department. This is just a big crate of cots. We could have some full up cots sitting in the shops.
Yeah. Look on Army surplus, see if they ain't got some of the old green cots. They were actually pretty good to sleep on.
Yeah. First I was just sleeping in, on dirt.
Sleeping on old banners.
I think, you know, Adam, he had his rig set up pretty nice. He had a TV and a car. Of course, he's an old boy scout. He'll leave his gun. So he was prepared. No, he did a good job and it's a lot of good compliments. So we appreciate that.
I think overall, thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't think I had any really. Complaints, just people asking like I talked to you about last night, that lady just last or yesterday, I should say. Yeah. The lady just asked if she was, she didn't know. She couldn't get out of her place. So she didn't know if the roads were open.
Didn't know if the roads were open. And that's the problem. A lot of people's driveways and yards are. So, but as far as I know, everybody's been out, you know, that was like about midday yesterday. They thought they had everybody out and, you know. You could miss somebody. Yeah, it's a lot of roads, a lot of roads.
Well, they're getting to with that young path.
Yeah. Yeah.
When you've got people that have been in the same seat for thirty-five years, they know where everybody needs, you know.
Or where their snow traps are.
You know, the new people are like. Forgot about.
Forgot about them. Yeah. You know, like I said, you know, I can't remember where I've been for sure because it's still in the wrong direction. Through the storm. In fact, which snow trap you probably need to get to first, you know. Generally it's from the north and west.
Straight west there for a while the other day.
Yeah, that made a whole difference.
I cleaned my yard off. I was happy to see that.
Did it really?
Yeah, pushed down on the roof.
Must, I think it all ended up at my place.
Probably.
I had to open it up just so the dogs had a place to get out my deck. But, so yeah, I'll be back by one o'clock for the budget thing. And then I am going to be gone next week.
See you there, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
No. I'm going south. We're finding an island somewhere. Arizona. Nope. That's not bad.
If you have your own package, you got my daughter, she passed.
There you go.
She's in Glendale.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. Do we?
What is that waste management open? That next link?
Motion to approve the claim.
Is the waste management open that way? Is that where you're going now?
Approval of claim.
Enjoying warm weather.
I just wanted to make sure that we're not just opening there. So, all right. So, Paul. All right. Uh, we can move on to the discussion of the health insurance.
I don't think he's here yet.
Okay. Right.
Probably was planning on.
So, Dave, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
All right. Um, I can. I didn't have any actual meetings, no Zoom, anything like that. Uh, what I am working on is getting the conference board agenda and those things also. Closely with Colin to make sure I keep my timeline and get that written report back from the examining board and. Hopefully have an agenda going out here, getting a meeting set up for Monday, the twenty-second is the timeline that we have to be up against now. Uh, what I did is I pulled out a lot of paperwork to kind of go over, but. The things that we focused on in the forty, uh, four one point six, they're sent. Did you want to talk about something or just?
He's got these two tax.
Could do them.
We could. We can just do it while you're here. Come on up.
Perfect.
Yep. That's why we, we don't have times on it anymore. So come on up and we'll talk about.
Sit right here.
Sure. Come on down. That way you won't have to talk so loud.
Well, I don't.
Tax abatement at fourteen thirty three hundred sixty street in Vail, Christie Rickers, a new home. So what do you got there?
Um, rural agricultural, uh, new home is a small home on about nine hundred square foot on a slab. But it, their estimated cost, they say, is over a hundred thousand, which I'm sure it is.
Yeah, how much then?
Um, they gave unknown, but they marked yes over a hundred thousand. Um, so the assessed value in the end has to be over a hundred thousand for the, uh, payment to be, yeah, to qualify. But it likely will.
Likely.
Um, we would recommend approval.
Okay. It'd be hard, yeah, nine hundred square foot slab, a garage.
They didn't, they didn't have a square foot, uh, uh, dollar estimate per square foot?
No, she just said unknown and she was not sure. She. She thought it was going to be over a hundred. I would guess probably our estimated assessed value added would be. Between maybe a hundred twenty, a hundred forty thousands. It depends. Yeah. I guess, I guess.
Okay. But everything checked. All the boxes are checked that, uh, the tax abatement of a hundred percent for three years. Is that where they're at?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the tax payment for three years, Christie Rickers.
I'll second it.
Hi. Any further discussion? I'll call the vote. All favor.
Aye.
All right. That has passed. Thank you, Seth. And then we have another one, uh, take of action on twenty-seven hundred block of K Avenue. Casey Buck new home.
Okay. Um, don't have an address for that one yet at this time, but, uh. That's a twenty-six hundred square foot home. Estimated cost six hundred thousand. Um, and it's also a rural agricultural.
Okay.
Tax abatement for Casey Buck, twenty-seven hundred block of K Avenue. I'll second it.
All right.
I just got a question on that. They haven't started construction either one of these.
Uh, Casey's estimated spring of twenty-four. And, uh, the other one was going to start in November. Um, we hadn't made it back out, but we were there late November.
Okay. The application had been pulled before they started major construction. Cause I know that's got it in pass has had. Some problems, some issues arise that had been passed this board because they'd already had most of it built before they. Put in the application. I think it states that it hasn't been filled out before.
Yes, yep, it is supposed to, yes.
Well, they say dirt work and.
Yeah.
Footings aren't really construction yet.
I think that's kind of where we latched at if they had to start downing some footings down. We'd still allow it.
That's a three year?
Three year, hundred percent.
That's the only question I have.
You've been out to where they're building that on K Avenue to see the site?
We haven't. He filled this out the tenth. We haven't made it out. He told me they weren't starting until the spring.
Okay. Yeah.
We will try to make it out when weather.
Okay. All right. All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Call motion, all favor.
All right.
Aye.
Chair both sides. No, it passes. All righty. Thank you so much, Seth.
Do you typically sign these right away?
We got two newbies. I'm pretty sure.
All right. Some spot in there.
Uh, right here?
Yep.
And we state that it is the sixteenth, correct?
So, Ray? No.
All right. Thank you, Seth.
Perfect. Thank you. Have a good day.
Yep.
Thanks, Seth.
All right. Got those taken care of. All right. We still don't have our, um, did you have something you needed to bring to us? We can take care of it.
Going to do citizens input.
Oh.
You want to do the set time and date?
We can do that.
Public kind?
We can do that.
Yeah, I was trying to get ahold of the USDA to see if they had any. CRP contract availability, but it goes right to busy. So, well, we got probably the phone lines or. It'd be nice to know if we could get it signed up before we set up a. Auction to rent it off. We didn't have to.
We put on next week's agenda then, if you don't want to take any action.
On there for that. What word? Are they out here?
Yeah.
That's the number you're trying to call?
Five zero one eight.
Kind of prioritize.
I mean, we could set it and then if you find out something, we could just cancel it.
What day are you thinking? Next week?
For the hearing?
No.
No.
We gotta publish it.
You gotta publish. We gotta put it in the paper and stuff. And you want to give people time to. Get their ducks. Find it.
And if we gotta spend all that money.
Two weeks in a row or something too. I don't know what you're planning.
Putting it in the paper nut free.
February probably.
Into February.
I'd just soon push it off for a week.
Yeah.
Give you a chance to get ahold of them.
Okay.
Okay, so no action.
That should be.
All right. Everybody through with that?
Do you want to try them back here? I mean, we could still do the action.
Yesterday was so.
We're in a meeting all day.
We are.
We could do it.
Yesterday was a holiday, so you weren't going to get.
We want adjourned. We'll actually just go to lunch.
Yeah, you're right. We'll just, we'll keep, we'll stay in session all until we adjourn at four o'clock.
Yeah. So we'll do that at any time today.
Okay.
We'll just break for lunch.
Push it off to next week if we can get a home vouch.
Yeah, exactly. Great point.
All right.
I'm listening.
All right. That's a no act. All righty. So we'll move back up to, uh, county health insurance medical plan. We're ready for you guys. Go for the insurance.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Couple chairs there for you guys. Thank you.
Hello.
Awesome. Hello. You made it.
Oh, yeah, of course. How many do we have? They made the service slide.
Six of us.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Wayne didn't get one.
Oh, that's all right, I.
Are you gonna, are you just gonna have them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. Well, I'm Joe Langle, Jeff Clayton, we're with Holmes Murphy and Associates, I'm at Boeing, nice to meet you all. Um, we are the largest independent broker in the state of Iowa. We work with lots of cities and counties, um, and government agencies, medicine schools. It's one of our clients, um. So we're just happy, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys today about Holmes Murphy and then also, um, some programs that are unique to cities and counties. So I believe today you guys are just partially self-funded with Walmart.
Right?
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, getting off the app or?
No, I know, so originally, um, I think you talked to Keith for office as well, so I don't know if, if there was anything specifically you wanted us to make sure we addressed, or just kind of want to just kind of go over some of our thoughts and what we do and what would be the best use of your guys' time.
Well, I'd like to hear your own views, once you get offered us.
Yeah. So today, so we know you're with Walmart, are you working with a broker today?
Out of the Hoffman Agency.
Hoffman Agency, okay. Um, and you're partially self-funded, has that been something you've been for a long time?
Mm-hmm, yes. Uh, so, yeah, we think, we think partial self-funding is the way to be for municipalities, things like that. I think there just might be a better way to they purchase that program, we'll talk about that today, than also give it over to you at Holmes Murphy. So if you look at the second page there, um, we are the largest independent, I guess here between, I guess, I'm just having to look at it backwards, but if you were to hire Holmes Murphy somewhere to Hoffa to, you would have a, a full dedicated team. Jeff, myself would be the leads, along with Keith Duncan, uh, he was double booked today. Um, and then you'd have two account managers also assigned to your guidance, your team. So when the employees out in the field have a question about their insurance, think something's not paid right, they have direct access to our Holmes Murphy team, so they're not waiting on a hold of Walmart or your third-party administrator about their, about their partial self. From a service standpoint, probably operates over like you guys know today.
And the, the service team would be people that work with city, other cities and counties and school districts, so they're going to be, they're going to be one of their more focus on government entities versus the private sector. So they'll work in some private sector groups as well, but we try to make it be that people, obviously cities, counties are a different, you know, a different system, different things than a private sector, so we try to make sure they at least have a, a better understanding of what you, what you do versus something like that. So if you bring in somebody else to work at some of the existing accounts we have.
A little bit about Holmes Murphy, we've been around since nineteen thirty-two. We are privately held, uh, so Jeff and I are two of the owners of the company. Uh, we're the largest independent agent in Iowa, so it does get a little bit more leverage with some of the insurance counties out there. We have a little bit bigger stick to carry, I guess, when we go to market on your behalf. Uh, we have over a thousand employees, but we're still headquartered here in Iowa. We have a large office in Dallas, Texas, and Denver and Minneapolis, which does give us more resources than some of your local, um, agencies might have. Um, go to the next page there. We are full-service benefits consulting firm, so the price, one thing about if you choose Holmes Murphy over the Hoffman or any other agency, you know, the price is kind of the price, except for one program we'll talk about at the end. Um, so what you guys are paying today, it would just simply trade to Holmes Murphy. Uh, we have actuarial team, uh, legal, budgeting. Basically, everything is again today was what Holmes Murphy replicate, their healthcare reform compliance, um, budget modeling, prediction with your partial funding claims, um, and then customer support. So this slide is just kind of showing what we all do. Um. Put this slide in here, you know, a lot of times you see your agents, maybe you see your agent at the panel renewal. Um, we believe there's stuff to do all year long, so we're meeting with you guys at least on a quarterly basis. We send out monthly plans reporting. Um, it's not just, we show up at renewal and here's the new number, what do you guys want to do for next year? So this kind of shows like there's stuff going on all the time uh, with our groups. Do you guys get quarterly reporting now, or how often do you guys see your reporting?
Yeah, no.
You know, okay.
You get it every, every renewal time you get?
Yeah.
Information.
Every renewal.
Renewal, that's probably what I remember seeing.
Okay. So we like, I believe you guys are probably in the fifty-one to a hundred space, does that ring a bell to anybody? Walmart's market segment you might be in?
Over a hundred.
Over a hundred.
One-on-one plus?
I mean, we're like right at one-ten.
Okay, oh, so then you're, so thank you for that.
We got our yield back.
Yeah, good, good. Um, so that means you're in the one-on-one plus mark with Walmart. That actually means you get reported on a monthly basis. So that's even better. So at least monthly, you guys should be seeing your premiums paid versus claims paid. Then on a quarterly basis, we show you all large claimants over ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So what that does, it helps us predict what your renewal is going to be, so we're not just out here ninety days in advance saying, oh, we got a ten percent renewal, you know, you guys deserved it. We're on a monthly basis, we're showing you guys what your loss ratio is, so Walmart, that information is out there for a group of your size, that is something you'd get from us on a monthly basis. We'd also like to be quarterly, kind of go through that, what do these numbers all mean? So that way when the renewal comes, it's not a complete surprise.
So that reporting, whether you're seeing it or not, it is out there. So Walmart just automatically is creating its monthly reports. So with Holmes Murphy, we, what we do is we pull the reports, we put them in our own format, and part of what, where we put them in our own format is, you know, let's say you changed carriers at some point, not saying you need to, let's say you did, obviously you want to have a historical record and not just tied to the one specific carrier. So we would get that, we get the large claimants, and then also when you're, if you're partially self-funded, we want to like, you know, work with that reporting as well to make sure you're properly funded. You know, look at your claims being, your payments being paid and all that kind of stuff, that all should be integrated when you're looking at. So again, that's not anything that's like special, they're, they're out there, whether you're getting them or not, but there are things that are out there. Walmart, we just do that by default typically, for a hundred plus. That's kind of why he was asking the size. If you're smaller, there's less reporting that's available, but Walmart actually has, the Elgott side screen is pretty good reporting.
So we do have an example in here about that. So this just kind of shows what the role of benefits broker, so you guys have a broker today, you know, just things that are always included with what Holmes Murphy do, does, you know, long and short-term strategy, marketing, so we are independent, like I mentioned, largest independent agent in Iowa. We are Walmart's largest broker, but we're not beholden to Walmart either, so we, we're a good healthcare, um, at a hundred and ten employees, you guys wouldn't be large enough to be self-funded. So that's something we could look at, just using a third-party administrator to scroll, completely be self-funded, if your claims warranted something like that. Sounds like maybe you guys don't know what the claims are at, so we couldn't really make a recommendation, but that's something we're always looking at after our clients. Um, vendor management, we really believe that we're the middleman between you and your vendors. So in this case, it's Walmart. You guys probably have life and disability and dental. We'd also manage those relationships, so maybe the folks behind us, you know, don't have to worry about who my dental, dental contact is, who my Walmart contact is, you just go to Holmes Murphy, we handle all those relationships on your behalf. Uh, the financial reporting, that is really the biggest thing we do. Like we said, we don't want to show up with renewal, that we have no clue it's coming. Um, also, I mentioned our, our self-funding, you know, if you guys are running at a fifty, sixty percent loss ratio, that means you're paying Walmart, every dollar you're paying Walmart, you're only paying out fifty cents in claims. In a situation like that with a hundred and ten employees, you guys should be looking at self-funding, not just partial self-funding. So those are things we'd also advise you guys on. Um, compliance, I used to always make fun of Jeff for being an attorney, but with the passage of ACA, healthcare reform, it has been very helpful, so we have a full staff of attorneys um, that are always there to answer any compliance questions our clients might have.
And also the thing, I know cities have to do different compliance reporting that, you know, like a private sector doesn't, so we're familiar with all those different things as well. You're probably clearly doing that already, but again, we're another resource to help you with that, or also to help you figure out who to use for different things, as we know laws constantly are changing, more rules are always coming up, so part of our job really is to proactively be telling you that versus you just kind of finding out after like, oh, now we have to do this report. So that's really, again, with our focus being on government entities, that helps us kind of keep on top of all those different things before they have it, both federally and on the, and the state level, too.
And there's just so much going on, like Jeff and I, all we do is employee benefits, so we don't, we don't also do home and auto, we don't do the property catalog. We have departments that do that, but really, healthcare is so expensive and complicated, that's, this is all we do, so some of your local agencies, you know, they do the home, the auto, things like that, which we strictly do group health insurance, we don't sell individual health insurance, things like that. Other support, I mentioned, um, you know, we want to be an extension of your HR department or auditor's office department. We know there's not a huge HR staff in most county governments, um, so your, your employees would have direct access to our team as well, so if they have questions on hey, I don't think this is paid right, or shouldn't have partially self-funded have kicked in, you know, they can call us, they don't need to call you know, someone that's already overworked here in the county. They have direct access to Jeff, myself, plus our two team members that are in the office more than we are, or around different meetings like this. Um, we also believe in doing employee meetings. So coming out at least once a year around the renewal during open enrollment, educating your employees on their benefits. Um, we also have systems where we can do like voiceover PowerPoints, a lot of times, maybe the spouse at home who's actually does knows about the health insurance for the husbands on that carries it, or vice versa, so voice or PowerPoint where we can just send out an email, go through the benefits presentation, make sure that everybody needs to hear what the changes were for the upcoming year, to get that information. So that's all included at the price you're going to pay in the day, um, just kind of what our value adds and why we think we're different than, um, other agencies out there.
A lot of people also use that for new hires too, so when you have your, like your orientation, you know, you would include here's here's your packet of information, but here's also video going through everything. So you can use the same one, sometimes we customize it, so the new orientation one's different, obviously maybe you're talking about different things, but those are all things that, that we do and do for you. And the service people, so we mentioned, they haven't been selected, if you were working with us, you know, we would help just figure out who's the best fit for a particular group, you'd have two different people. Um, they would, you would, you would know these people, I mean, they would, they would come with us to meetings as well, or they might do the employee meeting, so um, we do have clients all across Iowa, I guess you mentioned, we have us in Omaha too. We actually just, we're a school district that's south, south of here, so again, even though we're located in central Iowa, we're all, we're all over the state all the time, so we have clients much farther away than you that we see regularly, so that would be.
And like I, I said, we do dentists and schools, so that might be a natural fit for that service person to work with the county as well, so.
How long you been at dentists and school?
It's been at least ten years. I, the person I originally sold it has since retired, I believe, and it's, you know, it's transitioned through Holmes Murphy at least ten years.
Ten years.
Well, they'd probably be a good reference of how Holmes Murphy does as an agency, kind of service provider. Um, Jeff and I personally work with City of Harlan, um, City of Lamar's, we have, we have a bunch of references here we can give you guys as well, but if you flip to the next page, it kind of looks, yeah, this little meter here, so like I said, we, we're independent, um, we get paid the same regardless of if you guys are with Walmart, or you're with healthcare, you're self-funded, level-funded. So just kind of showing you what's all out there. You guys today are self-funded, you know, the further you move with us, or you're partial funded, the further you move across that spectrum, the more risk you guys take on, you know, so again, not knowing your guys' claims information and how you're performing today, we can't really make a recommendation there. But we're fully, we're well-versed in every single funding mechanism out there.
And one thing, I don't, I'm not sure it's in here, but we do have a whole actuarial and reporting team, so if you were, we were looking at self-funded, we not only would use I guess from the reporting side, with the Walmart's data would help us do that as well, but we independently also come up with calculations to kind of do and confirm, okay, do we agree with what we're seeing here? It's like just said, there is more risk with that, but if we, if you ever did go to being fully insured, yeah, fully self-funded, it wouldn't be something where we just jumped into without any data, there would definitely be some analysis and some different things we would look at to make sure we made that recommendation. And like just said, we get, we get the same regardless, so we don't have any incentive to be like the script should be this because we make more money off of it. If we don't, whether you're fully insured or self-funded, we're going to, it's going to be exactly the same.
Uh, the next page does show some examples. We believe a group of your size should be getting this on a monthly basis, so you can kind of see the pitches are, there's, it's just, um, examples of nothing. You don't need to read there, but really showing your monthly premiums versus monthly claims, and then the kind of the the pie chart one, this is your large claim report. So one thing we do want to track is who our large claimants are, not what their names are, but you know, if it's an employee, spouse, things like that, we can make recommendations. We are seeing more spouse surcharges, things like that. You know, if your spouses are really the drivers of your claims, you know, we can at least have a conversation about it. We'll never say you have to do this, you have to do this, but at least bring your recommendations. What we're seeing in the marketplace and maybe what's impacting, uh, proper counties' claims. Uh, the other thing we like to track, you know, your large claimants are, a lot of times, things are one and done, so I had a hip surgery or something, now I'm better, you know. Those claims that happened this year aren't the same as, you know, an ongoing treatment or something for next year, so it is important to know the prognosis and diagnosis of your large claimants, so we can make predictions, um, for the upcoming year, what you, how your rate should be set.
Another thing too is, um, it sounds like you're not really seeing claims due today, as we all know, there's a bunch of medications that are insanely expensive, obviously all the ones you see on TV, um. The more different funding ranges you look at, so when you actually get to self-funded, there are actually some things that you can do, you can't do, when you're smaller, you can actually do pharmacy carve-outs, where your pharmacy program isn't part of Walmart, so you can put it with something else. And the reason you do that is, just like anything else, certain people have better contracts, there's other ways to sometimes get medications, like Humira is the one we always talk about, we hear about all the time. A lot of interesting stuff's going on with Humira right now, but I guess Walmart's changing everything to a biosimilar.
Yeah.
But historically, you know, like with Humira, that would be one, like there is other ways to sometimes get that medication versus your traditional integrated Walmart plan. Those are all things we're very familiar with. Um, and I would say not just private, that used to be more of a private sector thing, but definitely municipalities are looking at that more, just because those are so expensive. And usually those medications also, they're not going to go away, right? If you have somebody on these ones, they're going to keep on, for the entire time, they're going to work for you. So what's the solution to figure out something so you're not getting hit with, you know, hundred thousand, million dollar pharmacy every single year, which is going to impact the rest of your claims?
Yeah, we didn't get much of our background, but I've been at Holmes Murphy eighteen years, I'm from Lamar's originally, um, so this is all I know, I went to you and I and then I started at Holmes Murphy, but when I first started at Holmes Murphy, pharmacy was about ten percent of a, a, a company's spend, you know, out of the hundred percent. Now it's closer to thirty or forty percent, so really, healthcare trend right now is like nine percent if any of you ask, and it's like thirteen pharmacy and most seven are medical. So we got the medical part under control, but really we do not have a pharmacy under control, so really having someone watch this data for you, we think can add a, a big, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
There are groups in Iowa that we have personally that are sourcing drugs from Canada. So the Humira, things like Jeff talked about, you know, that is legal to do. We can't do it on a group basis, on an individual basis you can. So there are groups currently doing that in Iowa that are, you know, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yep.
We don't know if you guys have a drug problem here in Harlan, or excuse me, here at, um, proper county, but you know, once we dig into that data and stuff, at least we can tell you what's going on, tell you what, and show you those options.
Yep. And here's another thing, yeah, so I guess you said, so yeah, I, I worked at Holmes Murphy the same time as him, obviously I'm older.
Thank you.
As an attorney, you know, I did that for a while, then I went there, yeah, I'm definitely older than Joe, um, but we, we've been working on almost all our groups together, so we have some groups separate, but basically we're generally a team, have different service people, but we work on everything. I also group in Iowa, group in Des Moines on the south side, so we basically have been Iowa, Iowa lifers. Um, but another thing back to the pharmacies, I was talking about the Humira, so this is something, I'd just be curious if you're aware of it, so as of your renewal date, Humira is actually no longer.
No, Humira's one-one.
One-one, okay.
Prudent RX is seven-one.
Okay, you're right.
So I don't know if your broker told you.
Yeah, so one-one, I don't know if he's even on Humira, because I mean, you don't, obviously I haven't seen your data, but did your, did the broker share anything about how that's no longer covered with Walmart as a one-one?
I don't think so.
So.
Doesn't sound familiar.
So as a one-one, this is not, this is not specific to your, all size groups, self-funded, fully insured, Walmart no longer is covering Humira, if you're on Humira or your employees or your spouse, they have to go to a biosimilar, which is a cheaper version of Humira. That's a huge disruption. The only reason I'm kind of saying that is I think those maybe are some of the things that would be, you know, we could bring this different, just because our size is a little bit larger, we're kind of on top of those things. If you have anybody taking that, they are going to be unhappy. Because they're going to have to change the medication they're taking, and hopefully maybe you don't. But those are the kind of things that proactively, you know, with our groups, we, we, we found out this change was taking place. I would say Walmart's rollout of kind of marketing it has been pretty bad.
Yep.
You know, I think they, I think internally they really didn't know what, what they were, what was going on, or when they were going to do it, but yeah, as a one-one, anybody on Humira, they go get a, they try to get a prescription or refill, they're going to be denied and have to go onto something else.
Yeah.
And we, yeah, and we think we're going to, and we think this is really just the beginning of things like this with Walmart. That's a huge one to change, there's other medications where there are similar drugs coming out, so this is probably just the start, like the test run before we see more. But those are things you definitely want us to be involved with, because, you know, you don't want an employee all angry about this and thinking maybe you personally made the change to like not cover this from a cost standpoint, to go back to us and kind of explain what it is, and that's what we've been doing, we had, we had one group where um, those of us that think the CEO's wife is taking, was taking it, right, and then they tried to get a refill, and there was a problem, so we actually, of course, you know, had conversations directly with them to explain what was going on. Um, that we had not done something, that the HR staff had not done something, so those are the kind of things, regardless of, you can, you can lean on us for that. He did also mention this program, prudent RX, which I don't know if you've heard about that as well, but that's set my renewal date, you'll have to add that, and that is kind of what he's talking, we're talking about with getting drugs from different places, things like that. You won't have the choice if you're self or fully insured to not do it, Walmart will make you do it. And there's going to be definitely some, and we're talking about Humira, one thing, this is going to disrupt way more medications than just that. It's not necessarily a bad thing, because I think the whole cost idea is to hopefully get pharmacy spend under control, because it has become such a big piece, but it's another one that we're going to really want to make sure the employees aren't educated on it, or if they[1752.64] Get pharmacy spend under control because it has become such a big piece, but it's another one that we're going to really want to make sure the employees aren't educated on it, or if they have an issue. Have a resource to go to to explain what's going on. Um, again, it's not bad. Self-funded groups have been able to do this for a while. And most of our self, they can opt in or opt out. I think all of ours actually did opt in once we looked at it. But again, there was definitely a rollout and an education part that took place because. It's going to be the people impacted that are taking the expensive medicines. It's not going to be this, you know, the five dollar one, it's going to be the, you know, hundred thousand, yeah, things like that. So again. Not necessarily a bad thing, but you really want to make sure there's some education. Again, people are going to ignore stuff. So what's, what do you do when somebody's upset about it? Have us as a resource to explain it again.
Do you have somebody on your team that actually can explain that to our people that have?
Yes, yeah. And we're, and that's the thing is, we're, you know, we have enough groups, enough varied sized groups, they're different in industries. Nobody likes change. It doesn't really matter what, what field you're in. So, you know, part of it really is just messaging that in a way that kind of explains, again. That the decision you're, as, as like as a county is deciding, this is what's kind of is happening in the marketplace, and also that you're not the only group that's going through this. So. Um, it'd be no different than any other group that we have where we're having these changes and we're having to do education. I'm kind of just thinking, we're only beginning of January. I'm sure there's a lot of people that have not had a refill yet that don't really realize this is taking place with the Humira thing. And we're going to continue to probably hear this for the next, next few months. A lot of those will be one-on-one conversations because, you know, just. Again, people ignore stuff, right? And they're going to think that it's only there in that situation. And I think part of that is just kind of walking it through it.
Until their pharmacy gets denied.
Yep.
Humira is seventy-two hundred dollars a fill.
Yeah.
You know, that's not covered. People don't have seventy-two hundred dollars in their pocket to pay it and they're, they're nervous. That's a life-altering drug.
And, 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 and we're also willing to talk to pharmacists. I think sometimes though, what we have too is these changes are made, it's not like they're like sitting there waiting around like, hey, what's Walmart going to do this month? So, for any carrier. So we do have to sometimes have conversations where like, this is what's happened. And you know, if you're talking to this employee that comes in. And they're upset, you know, if they don't really know what's going on, they're going to probably say, I don't know who did this. Maybe, maybe the county just decided not to cover this. So that's part of our job too, is not only to. Hopefully educate the employees and their, and their families, but if we need to talk to pharmacists as well. Just to explain what happened, most of them probably will, and they're going to know it at some point because you, there's no talent in Iowa, we're not going to have somebody taking Humira, right? There's going to be this somebody.
I think with a hundred life group, you'd probably have two people on Humira at least. I mean, Humira is the most common drug out there right now.
Yeah, but I think that's it. I think with our, with our, that's the knowledge base that we have, we can usually have those conversations and. Walk people through it. Like you asked, you're going to have a service team that knows all this stuff as well. They're going to be in your market segment, they're going to know counties and that's. Hopefully make it a little.
Homesmith. Looked it up, it treats them pretty serious.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Sarai, it's just more arthritis.
Yeah, it's not one you're not going to take, right?
Disease, there's a lot of nasty stuff.
So that happened January first, so it is on, your plan no longer covers that as of fifteen days.
That already happened?
It already happened, yeah.
And we didn't even know.
Yeah.
Our, our people. I don't know if we have anybody on that, mine do, but.
Well, just so, so we have an employee who. Who they, their spouse or child is taking a very expensive drug and they need a renewal tomorrow. They could go to the pharmacy and be told that it's no longer covered under their plan and they need it today.
Yes.
That's concerning to me.
Yeah.
Because I do know somebody.
Yeah. So what was supposed to, so what, I, and there might be a little bit of a window. They're like, I'm sort of confused with the windows because sometimes you might be looking at it one more time. Before they, you have to like address it. I know things were going out before one-one. Um, at least from our standpoint, by telling people to get your, try to get this prescription filled by.
So do you think that our people got a notice from Humira in the mail that we as a group might not know about?
They would have, they would have got a letter from Walmart.
Walmart would have to.
They would have got held, okay, so.
Now, that's a question if they read it, right? But they would have, they would have, you know, just like people getting ID cards and throwing them away because they're whatever. So, yeah, everybody that was impacted would, I mean. We don't know, who knows, they could have messed up some of the addresses, but in theory, everybody got a letter. Um, but again, that doesn't mean that they read it or that they understood it. So, yeah.
And if your, if your guys' staff is feeling your employees' calls didn't know about it too, that kind of, you know, that was one thing we were trying to be proactive. Also let the people that talk to the people. Know this is coming. So if you get a phone call, you understand. Yes, this was a change that was made across the board, et cetera.
And I, I will say that the rollout happened very. I don't know, I'd say quickly. So it was, it's been during like holiday season where people were busy. There's a very good chance people like might not have caught it. So. So state, we were with City of Des Moines, I see that, that's, that's our biggest client. I said, that's the biggest city in the state. A lot of interesting things happen there that we can kind of apply that knowledge to. Um, to our other counties and city clients. But we had a meeting with Walmart, you know? That Walmart canceled three times and it was all related to these, this pharmacy changes because they didn't know what was going on.
Oh, my word.
So we actually finally had that meeting on Friday. And we're into January. So that kind of just shows, my, my hunch is, yes, letters went out, but whether people read them.
A pile over here, they're going to look at it and things slow down.
It's like Christmas time and you're doing stuff. So you're going to probably hear about it the first time somebody goes to get the refill. And they can't get it anymore. And it's not going to be consistent. So somebody had, like, United Healthcare hasn't made this change. And so, you know, it's not like every, the pharmacist may not know it, but everybody, it's not going to be consistent, like. No care, no coverage of this way. This is a Walmart decision. And again, like I said, I think the reason the rollout was so like last minute is because they've never actually done anything like this. And I think they were really trying to figure out what they, what are they doing? So. My hunch would be the rollout was not great. Like I said, we've already heard from like some groups where people though, you know, like CEOs weren't. Had no idea this change had taken place.
And the pharmacist delivered the message.
Yeah, the pharmacist in, in Des Moines, this is a group in Des Moines, which, you know, obviously the Des Moines is a larger place. You think they would have got to come across this, it hadn't happened yet, so.
But nobody taking an expensive medication wants to be the guinea pig.
Yes.
Or the, that's just not a.
So since you're an attorney, can they be sued for that?
Yeah.
Who? Walmart.
No, but they get, I mean, they gave proper notice, they sent out letters. So they know that.
What I mean is, as a public entity, we pick them because maybe they cover Humira. Now that they don't.
So I, so I would have.
To me, that would be a li- liability on their.
You're right, on the union contract, things like that.
Living up to their end of the bargain that we paid for when we signed the contract.
I think, I think arguably you can say that. This is, again, this is the first time they've done this with a medication. So I don't know what the, this will be the beginning of a lot of things happening, but yeah, it's certainly.
Crazy, it'd be like ordering a steak at a restaurant and bringing you their Chinese. So.
I'd likely run it.
I'd be all right with it. And mine do. They are, they are covering the biosimilar, right?
Yeah.
So it's not like Walmart's same.
I see, I see what you're saying. It's a generic maybe.
It's a cheaper version.
It's a.
That does the exact same thing.
Yeah, in theory.
That's the thing.
I think that people, if they know the change is coming and it was presented properly.
Yep.
They get used to it, but if you walk into the pharmacy and that's the first you hear of it.
Right.
That is the worst scenario.
Right, yes. That's, that's kind of what, that's happened, that's happened.
So that, I think that, that's another thing that sets home apart. This is all we do. We only do employee benefits. The two other people that be signing out, they only do employee benefits. They're not doing auto ID cards and other insurance, you know, we, we. This is what we do all day, every day. That's why we know this.
Same thing with this prudent RX, the programs coming out. It, it will be a change for people to basically say you're needing your medication a different way, but the way the program's set up, it actually has no cost. To the employees for this, for this particular prescription.
Signed up for that. I agree.
I feel like.
Maybe you already did it? Okay, okay.
Yeah, we did. So that'll be effective seven-one for you guys?
It was, it was actually effective nine-one of last year.
Oh, okay.
Been early, okay, good.
Okay, so you have, okay, that's good, that's good to know, because that would be, that would be a change. But this kind of, I guess this kind of issue you retire with the medicines, like, so you have a broker, that information would go. They would have that. We're talking like changing stuff. So all the broker and I would be notified, these are the changes.
And a member impact list.
Member impact list, like how many people you have from a, a group that is going to be impacted. So for example, City of Des Moines, we got a list of, you know. We don't know, we don't have their names, obviously, but you know, X amount of employees, this many spouses are going to impact this, but we got that all the way down to. I don't, like groups of like twenty people.
Yeah.
So every size of the group, we got a list, again, not the names, but where are you going to be impacted? Obviously, if there's nobody on it, then you can just tell this group like. Here's this change, you need to worry about it, but you know, you might end up.
Your one hire way for someone.
Where you're going to have this, but by, by the time they're hired, this is what, this is the new norm. So it won't really, really matter. So those are all the kind of things that we just try to, you know, just, that's a one specific example, but again, trying to be proactive and tell you about things before they happen so that. If you hear, you know, unhapp- from happy people, you actually like can say, no, that was a. That was a carrier change, you know, talk, if you have any questions, go talk to our broker, we'll talk you through it.
So you guys have the ability or capability. Um, on a large scale basis to take the prescriptions that all of our employees use. And plug it into the system and say, hey, based on. These pharmaceuticals that you are using, this is the best plan for you to purchase.
Yes.
You do?
Yes. You have to carve out your pharmacy from Walmart or the carrier. Right now Walmart only allows groups of two hundred and fifty employees to do that, so you're not quite there. But we do that all the time. Like, we're doing a pharmacy RFP for City of Des Moines right now. Walmart chose CBS Caremark. That's who you guys have because that's who Walmart chose. Most groups, they would do exactly what you're talking about. Take your list of medications that your people are on, send it out to market and say, oh, Optum RX is actually a better, they have better discounts on the mix of drug our people are using. We'll keep our medical Walmart, we'll move our pharmacy to Optum RX. Or MedOne out of the view, or, you know, there's, there's a million pharmacy vendors out there, not a million, but there's a lot of pharmacy vendors out there.
You have to be self-funded. Um, so that's one thing. You have to be, so right now you couldn't do it anyway. Walmart does keep coming, so like coming down on the size at two fifty is what it is now. It used to be like five hundred.
And it'll probably be a hundred and a couple.
And there's, there's a lot of pressure to make these changes. And another thing which you probably haven't been told either, Walmart is supposedly changing their pharmacy. What, maybe one-one?
Yeah.
So there's.
Walmart's in the middle of a pharmacy.
There's a bunch of crazy stuff going on with Walmart that's going to impact a lot of groups. One's the Humira thing, another one, they probably won't have CVS as who they've been for a long time. So at some point, you're going to probably have a totally new pharmacy. Piece with Walmart that you have today, which from the standpoint of looking at other options, that would obviously be a good time to do it too, right? Because you're going to have disruption anyway.
Yeah.
So we're not trying to look at everything at once, so.
But a lot of it comes in the mail. It's not like it used to be there, where you're going to go to the pharmacy if it's going to come in the mail and.
Yeah.
What we say, we don't have a.
Well, that's what that would be for us, would be CVS, because we don't have a local.
Right.
And, you know, it'd be mail, so.
And it's, you know, I don't take anything, but it'd be nervous if it's coming in the mail and you got a snowstorm and you're on your last.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So one thing, I don't know, I'm just on there, but we, this pharmacy is such a big deal. We actually have a pharmacy team now, so we actually started hiring people with pharmacy backgrounds. Um, so when we do, if we do like an RFP, we're looking at the pharmacy, they're the ones that lead it, they're the ones that analyze the drugs. Their whole role really is to like, keep track of all these changes that are going on in the marketplace, not just Walmart specific, but in general. But that's one thing that Walmart or Whole Burpee recognize, like, here's something that we needed to have. Um, all the really big, you know, bro, you know, we're like a, I'd say a good sized broker, you know, that, that's what we have both sides, but all the big brokers had these pharmacy teams. We actually pulled some people from some of those larger agencies. Um, and it's been great. So now we have, that'd be the other thing you have access to, we have women are in someone or anything like that, but that information has been great. Because again, pharmacy is going to continue to be a huge spend. Probably only to get, get bigger, get more and more things possibly come out in the next few years that are also gigantic costs. So, which is good from obviously like, you know, standard of living and people living longer, but. How do you, how did your plan absorb those costs? When you don't have today. And so this pharmacy team has been great, great to have.
Yep. Um. I mean, I want to get through the, a couple more slides. So benchmarking, you know, we're the largest entity in Brooklyn, Iowa. We have, we have benchmarking, we can show you guys how your plans stack up against the marketplace. Um.
What is the WAKELI, I mean?
Uh, WAKELI is a, an actuarial firm that we use. It's just a, it's a.
It's the name of the company?
Yeah, it's the name of the company, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have internal benchmarking, we use WAKELI benchmarking, we subscribe to Mercer and all the other large things out there. So if you guys said, hey, what is the average deductible in? Iowa, what's the average deductible in, you know, Southwest Iowa or whatever, we can, we can narrow down and show you guys maybe who you're competing with and what kind of benefits they're offering.
So, so one of the nice things that are benchmarking is, you know, if Whole Burpee has enough business in Iowa, we have, we can just do our internal benchmarking, but like WAKELI, for example. Because we have these bigger offices like Dallas, like Dallas, you need to look, look at how Texas is, they're all gigantic companies. So our Dallas market is nothing like Iowa. I mean, most of their clients are like a thousand, ten thousand life groups, but they have access to technology and resources we wouldn't have. And some of it's like this outside reporting we can use. So. We not only have the Whole Burpee reporting, but then we can pull in nationwide reporting, more detailed reporting that we wouldn't have gotten if we were just. Based in Iowa on our size. Because I was, you know, we're a decent sized state, we're not a huge state. So having those other offices definitely helps, helps us.
And then the next slide just talks about, you guys are familiar with parcel funding, but you know, just. Groups that are not parcel funded, you know. What it means, um, things like that. So you're guys are buying it high, that's why you're buying it down. You're buying a five thousand dollar plan from Walmart or whatever. You're showing your employees a five hundred dollar plan. So that's just talking to that. The next page. You know, this is just some of the stuff we put together. So how do you, what do you guys need to accrue for? So. Yes, we're buying a five thousand dollar plan from Walmart, our employees have a thousand dollars out of pocket. We're on the hook for four thousand dollars for every single and maybe eight thousand dollars for every family on the plan. What do we use last year? What's the historic average? You know, are we going to hit twenty-five percent? Are we going to hit? Fifty percent, you know, the county, if everybody in that year hits their out-of-pocket maximum, the county would be on the hook for an extra million bucks or whatever. Do you guys keep track of year-over-year what you spend is? That's something we do for you guys. So, and then we also, like, like Jeff said, we have actuaries on staff that'll run models and things like that, say, hey. A group this size with these demographics, you know, this many males, this many females, this average age, we would expect you to spend twenty-two percent of the maximum liability next year. So that way you guys can set aside twenty-two percent on top of the money you're sending Walmart to pay for those claims that come. That's.
That's information to be.
Yes.
That way we won't have to sit there and look at that paper and say, I wonder if that's.
Watch our unbalance.
I was sitting here thinking, Kyle, how many times have we said, talked this over?
Is that going to do it? And we didn't ask them questions to.
I know, and they haven't ever been able to tell us.
I, I think this is like the core of our job.
Yeah.
I mean, this is what we do.
Yeah.
Hard for Phil.
I don't know, you got me up.
Well, it's pretty easy to change an agent.
And that's, and that financial thing too, they're actually, so you know, we've kind of shut our footprint. We're based in Milwaukee, you know, that's still the main office. Um, the actual people, the financial, they're all in our office too. They're actually, they sit right by us. So they're not.
That big fancy building when you're driving by.
That big fancy building, yeah. I think COVID happened and we didn't even really work there for like two years. Yep. Um, yeah, they're all, they're all in there. So, but that's like, these people are like, they're here too. So if we ever need, so sometimes we actually do budget modeling, we bring in. Like our actual person to be kind of like, kind of do this real-time thing where you just, you know, mess with numbers and do different things. So you actually. Again, do it in real-time so it's faster. So you're like, hey, I want to see if he raises his deductible, what would this impact claim? So those are all things that we have the ability to do. But they're all going to be people out of the, the Milwaukee office.
We love messing with numbers.
Good.
We do.
See their own bank.
Any of, that, that was good feedback. Any other questions on parcel funding that we can answer today or?
Well, I, I'm, I'm just kind of wondering why they're here for, because of the lack of stuff we don't know.
We're looking at each other going, you know.
You know, you ask questions and that stuff, and we should know, or we should hate me, should have been notified of, and I've been looking over you and your face is kind of white. And those being the questions as well, so.
Well, you don't know what questions to ask. That's a part of it, you know.
Always don't know what they don't know.
Kind of blue to do that, maybe self-funding, fully self-funded is a better route.
I, I can't.
Whatever, I gather.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys are paying Walmart, you know, if your loss ratio is fifty percent and they're banking, there's, you know, every dollar you send them, they're only spending fifty cents a claim, absolutely. I don't know that part of the story yet, because you guys don't know your claims. Now, if you guys are paying, now if you guys are paying Walmart a dollar and they're paying ninety cents a claim, you know, the law, the target loss rate is like eighty percent. So, you know, they get a twenty percent buffer there to keep their lives on, ID card, customer service, blah, 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 have a beautiful building down, down to Des Moines. Then I would say, no, you're probably right where you're supposed to be. But not knowing that information, I really, I don't want to speak out of turn.
I'd be interested if you were.
Have that information, how long does it take you to respond back to us with the information?
Oh, not that long. Yeah, if you were with, if you're with Walmart, so yeah, so let's see, hires to be the agent. So I, remember, you mentioned all this reporting is there. If you had Walmart for a long time, which I'm guessing you did, because. Most counties have Walmart, right? Um, that data is there, whether you've seen it or not. So part of it would be, we pull all your historical data for the last few years, which is going to be your claims, your premium, your high claimants, and then our actuarial team would. Do an analysis to see.
We'll put it in that format, send it to you.
Like Joe mentioned, yeah, if your loss ratio's been like a hundred and twenty percent, Walmart's lost money, okay, that's not great, but, you know, you want to look at historically because every group's going to have. Ups and downs. The other one is looking at the claimants, you know, we talked about something, if it's pharmacy, then there might be some solutions to address that where, okay, this doesn't make sense now, but here's something we can do to like. Gets you on, gets you on track. But the size of the group that you are, if you're a hundred, a hundred, like, that is something at least that should be looked at every year. It doesn't make, means that it makes sense every year. We work with City of Newton. City of Newton just moved to self-funding. They've been fully insured. Were they, were they, were they even partial self-funding?
No, they didn't like.
Okay, they, they didn't like, yeah, they didn't like it. I thought it was a pain. So they had it, but kind of got rid of it. That was before we worked with them. But, yeah, we just moved into fully insured or self-funded this year. Um, and it made sense. Like, we just got their renewal and there, it's, you know, there's an increase, but it's less than when they moved to it. So that's something that again, just made sense and they're not.
City of Newt is about your size.
Yeah, they're about their, they're about the same size as you.
How do you guys, how, set up your, how do you get paid? Where you base it off of?
So we don't believe in commission. We believe in paying on a per employee per month basis. So if your rates go up, we don't get paid more.
You don't mean a percentage of commission?
We don't get paid a percentage of commission. So like if premiums go up, we get paid more. That's not how it works. So we, we prefer to get paid on a per employee per month basis. So similar to what you guys are paying today, we would just take that over. Do you guys have any idea what you're paying today?
Do you know? Not off the top of my head, but I, I, it's something I can look at.
Like maybe twenty dollar PPM or something like that.
It's not that much, so, but yeah, it's.
Is that how we reveal now is per employee per month?
So, so what I would, I guess what I would suggest is, you know, if you could give us the information of what you're paying, and that would be like all lines, not just, you know, the medical, what are you, what are you making on dental? All those different things, then we could tell you, yes, this is sufficient, right? If it's, if we're like, okay, that's way too low for the size we sell, so if we're going to do, we'll just.
Have problems.
A lot of times where we found though, like the, the revenue coming in is fine, right? We typically don't. Change it. But again, if you're, if you're, I did the broker logo, but for some reason, for, they have really just undercutting what they're making on this. That, that would definitely be a conversation. Obviously you would know all that before you decided that.
We are a hundred percent transparent though. So if there's like bonus commission or something, because. I, I'm, that's on life insurance, like not, not the medical, but, you know, we, we just close all that, in a compensation disclosure. I, I'm, that's on life insurance. Like not, not the medical, but you know, we, we just close all that in a compensation disclosure.
But our goal would just be to keep your costs the same. And again, on the flip side, if we actually took it over and it turned out they were making. An obscene amount of money compared to a group your size, which we'll know. We've had that happen before. We've taken them where the commission's like. Sixty dollars a person. That's like insane. I mean, that's like not okay. So, so we, you know, change.
At least you guys are a lot of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would have done it for twenty, but we'll take your sixty.
Yeah. How hard is it? Like, I mean, like our, our workforce has got a little younger, at least at the secondary roads, which is a large part of it. We've got younger there. And I don't know if that makes more, you know, young families are, but you, you, you know what I mean? It's got younger. So you're. Obviously as we get older, our expenses.
Yeah.
Go up.
Right.
But switching back from like full to partial or even to fully, I mean, that's probably easy enough to do year to year.
Yeah, you don't, you could, you, you generally wouldn't do it, but you can. You're not trapped where you can't.
But I'm just saying, how hard is it if you get, you know, you had a stretch where we were ten, ten years, because our young force out there, ten years that we were fully funded. But all of a sudden they start getting a little older and have a few more issues. You guys see it, cause you're tracking it.
Yep.
Sounds to me like we're gonna get tracking reports if anyone wants them. She can get them almost weekly the way it sounds. But the, uh. Then also like, what we've noticed is the different costs in medications. So we can always mix match all the time. I mean, you, that's what you guys basically.
Yeah, yeah. You could, yes. If you went to Walmart self-funding, you decided, okay, we want to change this. There's, you're paying claims differently, but you just buy a certain kind of contract. That's all. And you just move back to fully insured.
We'd buy a stop loss. If you went self-funded, we'd buy a stop loss contract that had a tail on it. So if you ever switch back to fully insured, those claims would be covered under that stop loss contract.
Yeah, true.
That's something we'd explain it though, if that made sense. Yeah.
I think I do.
Do you get into recommending? Like HSA accounts or things like that, that could be beneficial to employees?
Especially if you're trending younger, yeah.
That we're, we're not currently providing that might be a huge benefit too.
So going back, going back to that benchmark, if you can say, hey, you know, forty percent of all of our customers are offering HSA. Here's the average HSA deductible. Here's some money that seed money that most companies are putting into HSA. We can show you benchmarking and all that stuff. So I would say, especially if you think you're trending younger, HSA's are a great way to save for future healthcare costs or, you know, retirement or things like that. Absolutely.
And you wouldn't have to like, you know, a lot of groups where they add the HSA plan, they don't get rid of the other plans or the other plan. They just have it as another option. Yeah. And the way, you know, you have Walmart, let's just assume you're not Walmart long-term. Cause that's again, like most counties have Walmart. Actually rarely Walmart doesn't like. They don't rate differently. Cause you have a high deductible plan. I'm saying their pricing isn't necessarily great, but in terms of renewals, some of the carriers actually like, if you have like adverse selection, where everybody takes a certain plan. It impacts and can kind of get the whole renewal lopsided. Walmart doesn't operate that way. So from that standpoint, whether you, if you had it in like three people did it, or you know, half the people did it. It's gonna help make, obviously with the claims and loss ratio, but in terms of is your renewal gonna like start off worse or better? It's not. So it is one of those same to Walmart. Like if you, if you have, there's interest in it, there's almost no reason not to do it. It's not gonna mess up your plan by.
And a group, not saying, not saying we'd want this for administration purposes, but a group your size can have three plans. So I don't know how many plans you're gonna offer today, but there's no extra cost to offer two plans or three plans.
Yeah.
So that way you can, we know insurance is a one size fits all, right? So you and I might want a PPO plan with a twenty dollar copay. He healthier, he might want the HSA where he doesn't have to go to the doctor. So most. Organizations get choice. Cause we know insurance is the one size fits all. So then you can have up to three.
That'd be nice. We just do single and family. We don't have any, you know, anything in the middle.
Talked about that too. You're a husband and a wife. You're gonna pay as much as somebody that's a husband, a wife and six kids. Just doesn't.
Oh, you want four tier rates maybe?
Well. Yeah.
We have one plan.
Makes it two rates. Well, that makes it easy.
So you can have three plans with four rates if you wanted to. You could have three plans with two rates, single family. I will say in county and city government, single family is the norm. Most do not have employee spouse, employee child, non-family. But we can definitely, we can definitely look at.
Some counties out there that, that's how I stumbled across, looking at some other figures for counties. And it's like, well, this one's got plan one, plan two, plan three.
Right.
Yeah. And I think we looked at it at one time and it really made the, the employee fa- or you know, family really high. Yeah.
At the end of the day, Walmart wants the same premium. So how you slice and dice it. If you want to add employee and employee spouse, or excuse me, employee spouse and employee child rate. At the end of the day, they want the same premium. So those gotta be less. They jack the family right off.
Sure.
Right.
But that's something we can all work with. Like the goal is to get to four tier rates. There's ways that maybe don't do it right away, but you know, with a good renewal, we can offset dollars to.
But I think when you explain it in such detail, then it makes a little bit more sense. But when you're offered, this is what we have, take it or leave it.
Yeah.
One or two.
Right.
And you know, for, really, it doesn't seem fair if you're a husband and a wife and you're paying the same thing and barely go to the doctor. You got kids at the doctor every day and somebody having a baby, you know, and you're paying, you're actually.
Who, who gets to be the judge of that though? Cause it's not saying the family of six. Yeah, they're going, they got kids, got snipples and that. But the husband and wife, they're going to have hips replaced and larger, larger dollar items. So who's gets, who gets to be the judge of?
And that's why we've never really done it because we just really wanna.
They can choose to buy it. So you can keep your current plan. And if that's. Thousand dollar deductible plan, I don't know what you guys have. And you offer an HSA. Or you offer a five hundred dollar plan. You can, you can pay up to the five hundred dollar plan. So pay more. Or you go down to the HSA, you take that saving to put it your own savings account. So give the employee choice and it's still single family.
There are some, there are some programs, like if you, let's say you had two plans, a high deductible or the big variance, you can kind of plug in, they say. Trying to figure out the plan you should go on, plug in your costs, you know, what do you spend in a year to kind of get a sense of which plan is a better fit for me. There's tools, yeah, that, that people.
And we do employee meetings. We do sit down with people one-on-one. If you did have two plan offerings, we can say, hey, Jeff, what's your personal situation? Oh, you have two kids. They go to the doctor.
Yeah.
All the time. This plan might be good for you. So we do that on a one-on-one basis with the employees if they're.
Very good.
Perfect.
And we just always want to make sure in small town Iowa, that the doctors that are here are the ones accessible to that plan and they are covered.
Yep.
Yeah.
I, at the end of the day, I think holds would be great for you guys. I think Walmart is probably where you're gonna be at least the next two, three years, you know, until something drastically changes.
The only deviation we've ever made was to FAI, a subsidiary area of Walmart, which.
Oh, back in the day, that's gone now.
Yeah, it was back in the day. About lost our shorts on that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not around anymore. It's not a possibility. Dating yourself is a bill.
Thank goodness.
We knew what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say, if we're running out of time, one, one other thing that I think we maybe got the, not the door, but thank you for having me with us. We do represent the IG HCP as well. So Iowa Group Healthcare Plan. So that's a, that's a.
You said group. Iowa Governmental Healthcare Plan.
Yeah, I have government healthcare plan. IG HCP is with Walmart. It's a group of forty-eight counties, cities. Uh, four schools and four semi quasi-government things that came together to purchase.
Region twelve's over there.
Yeah, yeah. Region twelve's our client.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rick's, Rick's our client.
Yeah, he'd be a legal reference. He's worked with us a long time before they were in this. We got an exception.
We had, we had Rick self-funded with thirty employees back then.
On the board.
Yeah.
And he said he can't get off or his rates might change.
We're independent. We don't, we don't care. We'd make the same thing going there.
Yeah, he's a good member. Yeah. So we got them in there.
Rick hired us.
Not there.
Yeah, Rick hired us twelve years ago. So he'd be a great reference for Jeff.
Yeah, Rick's worked with us a really long time and he worked with us before they were in that. So yeah, so this is an option. So we don't own this trust. We just work in it. And we would have halfway groups that I, but again, this is something if you're with us, if you're with Walmart, it's really easy. You basically just request it as an option to look at. City of Newton, we talked about doing it. They decided not to do it. They decided just, it made more sense to go self-funded. So not like, it's not like every group we have, we end up putting into this, but. It is another thing that we're very familiar with and I think just from that expertise, we can show you that.
So I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you a ten thousand per view. If you look at that very first page.
You're not with ISAC.
No. We have groups in ISAC too though. We truly try to be independent. So if you want to see ISAC. They don't love us, but we could get an ISAC quote. We work with a couple of counties that are in ISAC, Alawelto and Marion, I think.
Cause we had their representative not a year ago.
Right. They're supposed to be putting something. Together. I think, I know.
So I don't think, so ISAC, I will say at least two trusts, they're competitors, right?
They're both of Walmart.
They're both of Walmart. They're competitors though. Um. The one we're, the one we're talking about is way more transparent. And that's the reason we actually think they're the best. So we're talking about this reporting you're not seeing. You will get that same reporting with them. You don't get it in ISAC. I just think you get almost no reporting. You get your renewal. So that's one of the hard things too, to evaluate. So one of the things about IG HCP is not every group that's, so the Moyn Waterworks is one of the groups we have in there. They used to be part of the city of Des Moines. They spun off. They're pretty, they're like three, yeah, they're pretty big. There's a good chance they're gonna go off on their own someday, just based on their size, but they're, they're in this right now. When that time comes, we get enough data where we can very much verify, does this make sense? If they were like a joint, like they couldn't have joined ISAC in a county, obviously, but. The data is just done with, we're limited. Trying to ever assess, should you be off on your own? I'll just tell you, it's very hard if you're in that one. So of the two, definitely like IG HCP more.
And IG HCP, you get, you go in at your own rate. So like Rick went in, they gave him a rate, but everybody gets the same renewal. So I might go in at a five hundred dollar single rate. Everybody in the trust got a four percent increase this year. So then my five percent, my five hundred. Yeah, they will.
Different than our ten, doesn't it?
Yeah.
You got a ten?
Well, the average increase, uh, for the last fifteen years has been two point seven seven percent.
Wow. And I already mentioned, they already, so they haven't had the meeting yet. They've been, but the renewal comes out in January. So we already know it's gonna be four percent. That's, that's one of the benefits of being in this is regardless of your size, you get the renewal really early. Where typically only like gigantic groups are gonna renewal that, that soon. We can always request it with your group though, even if you're, if you're standalone. So I think Newton, we get to, yeah, well, Newton, we already got it.
Yeah.
Right. So that's pretty early. But I think we requested that when we moved into that from Walmart. We want this renewal early.
So on this plan, they use partial funding. These forty-eight entities buy a Walmart high deductible plan with ten thousand, or actually five thousand employees, ten thousand bully buttons. So they're buying the Walmart plan you guys are buying with forty-eight other entities. So they're buying that Walmart plan cheaper than you guys can buy it on your own. And then each individual county or city is partially funded to what they want. So if you guys want a six hundred dollar deductible or something, you know, crazy, you can still have your six hundred dollar deductible. So it's just kind of like group purchasing through IG HCP. So we can get you that quote as well. If you hired Hold Murphy, what you would pay us to be standalone partial money and what you paid us to be in IG HCP, it would be the exact same. Johann Dennisson School. So, or they're not.
So if you. Dennis is not, Dennis is not in that.
There's a closed class. There'll never be another school in there. These schools were part of another trust that collapsed. And I think Seymour and. Has been in it forever. Yeah.
Schools have, there's another, there's different trusts for schools and Walmart runs that too. So this, this, yes, it's kind of the unique thing is in a school, this one. There won't be these schools away from it. It's gonna mostly be, you can see all the ones on the slide that are kind of like region twelve. We got exceptions for them because they're technically not supposed to be in it, but. You know, we got, get enough groups, we got them to agree to take them. Same thing with like the Wa- Waterworks and things like that. They'll see it's mostly cities and counties. That's, it's. Going to purposely mostly be cities and counties. I don't think you'll see a lot more like reason twelve type things. Be a lot of, they're not gonna like make them leave, but I think, you know, you're, you see all that stuff on the left. They want to have it mostly be counties and cities.
And since we, and since we pay the fee currently per employee per month, and you guys charge per employee per month. We can make the change at any point in time of year and not need to wait till fiscal year ends or whatever.
No, it's just basically there's a, Walmart has a letter and you just complete it and sign it and then you send it to us and then we send it to Walmart. And the other line is basically sending it to Walmart. Yeah, you can change your agent. I mean, there's a little bit of a window where it now gets processed and.
Employees won't notice a difference, you know.
No, it doesn't change anything with their cards and shit, anything with, everything is exactly the same.
Employees wouldn't know who your broker is unless you, once you introduce them to us to them.
Now, if we moved you to the IG HCP, which again, you would just, it would be like, hey, we're gonna get hired and move you there tomorrow, right? There would be some change because you're actually moving to a different Walmart.
Right.
Plan and policy and stuff like that. But in terms of.
The other thing about IG, we'd be happy to get IG's, well, we want to work with you first of all. But we'd be happy to get IG HCP quote, but you know, they do underwrite you and we do want. Walmart to underwrite groups going to IG HCP. We want to protect region twelves of the world, our other clients in there. We don't want to just let anybody in this pool. So you are underwritten. So if the quote looks good, great, you might join. But you know, maybe you guys are where you're supposed to be. Maybe you're supposed to be on your own, or maybe you're supposed to be self-funded, like we talked about.
Yeah.
Those are all options we'll show.
You're big enough to say you can look at everything.
I'd like to see you poke into our numbers and come back and tell us what you find out. Yeah. So we can't get any of your numbers. We're not your agent.
Nineteen.
We can provide them or we can allow you access.
Like he said, you can change your agent at any time. So we can be your agent on September first. Then we have access to all your data. To do a full market check, you know, look at IG HCP, look at self-funding, see what your renewal is gonna be.
Well, potential six percent interest if you want it.
I like the.
Yeah. I like the detail.
So what, what I would suggest is calculate, you know, we'll have some follow-up calculating, like what are you paying currently in commission wise? I think that's probably the first step because they like, yes, that's fine. Or no, that's. Too low. Or again, you're paying way too much, um, which I don't think is probably the case. We don't see that. We, I mean, we see it some, but not a ton. And then, and then you maybe just decide, okay, what's the next step? So we want to work with a little bit. Do you want to do something else? We want to bet this out more. I don't think, I definitely don't think you're gonna lose out on anything. In the worst case scenario, you hire us and you say, okay, they said all this stuff and we don't believe them, you know, you move it back. But we, I, I think like Rick, for example, region twelve. Great reference we can give you. You could talk to any client that we have, but I think we rarely lose groups. In fact, I'm not sure we've ever lost. I think every maker, we typically lose years because they get sold or, you know, go out of business, right? And that's gonna happen sometimes. Once in a while you lose, like a zero. Each person changes and they, you know, their best friend works or whatever. But I think we have a long list of references that they would say, yeah, Hold Murphy does what they say. This was a good choice. Um, I'm pretty sure Rick, they can come from a smaller agency.
Rick was self-funded with Oxy.
Yeah, he's some, they've done some interesting stuff, but I don't, I can't remember.
So Rick, so Rick, region twelve has thirty employees and they were self-funded. So we can definitely look at self-funded for a group of one or ten.
Yeah.
It just made sense for Rick's group to join this. So we took him self-funded to do this.
Wow.
But yeah, Rick had a different agent before he hired us.
What I'm saying, Harrison, you know.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
We have a lot of admiration for Rick. He's a heck of a gentleman.
Yeah. Yeah, he, he's done some innovative things that he's shared with us, you know, the prison housing and stuff like that, obviously.
Something else that you didn't point out? Any other questions? Cause I know we took a lot of.
So there's other value adds at the end, you know, like we have like a texting service. We could lower clients free if they wanted. So you could say, hey, secondary roads. We're going out at four thirty this morning. You could say, hey, open home is kind of up. We know, now everybody has email. So this texting service is kind of nice. That we give our clients access to. It's just value adds, like, you know, I'm, I'm paying commission to somebody. What am I getting for the commission I pay? Well, this is kind of like. Some value adds that we try to provide back besides our, our consulting services. And there's something else.
And once I would say, if, if you, if you hired us, the next, that next step would be, we actually would have a meeting. We'll bring the service. We'll kind of just go through your processes today. Make, you know, maybe initial recommendations like, okay, here's something you're not doing. That's pretty easy to change. I think it'd be more efficient. And then also big picture, like what's a, build a strategy, not just like in the short term and also. Long term. So we're talking about self-funder joining IG HCP. Maybe that doesn't make sense to do the first year, but like where do we want to see ourselves being in that time? What are some things we need to, you know, again, streamline processes and things like that. So those are, we do kind of a kickoff meeting. With whoever you think should, should be part of that discussion. That's usually what we typically do. And you're at a good place time-wise. I mean, sometimes obviously things happen last minute. I mean, we talked about that school like that was. They were, they were actually leaving a trust. A lot of stuff happened really, really fast. And that was kind of different. It would be, but typically it'd be more likely if we have a meeting and you decide to work with us, then we kind of.
Yeah, you could have several one-year olds. You have all the options in front of you.
Yeah.
Like this is a good time to make a decision. Who do we want to work with? And then, you know, cause the other thing that's kind of stinks is you don't want to make the old age and do all the work for the renewal, then switch anyway. So it'd be better to pick who you want to work with. Let us do the renewal work. Let us do the marketing work for you and then just move forward.
Right.
So it's now really the time to make these decisions. So.
I have a really good question. Um, do you guys help employees trans- or, uh, transition to Medicare? I know you said you don't do individual insurance, but we do have a lot of people. That's a huge thing.
Yep.
So.
Does your current agent, the current agent do that? So I'd say, so we don't do Medicare, but we obviously emerge more with it. And that is, that situation is obviously not unique to, to any group.
Right.
So what sometimes happens is there's two different things. Sometimes if the, if you're in a good relationship with the old agency. We just continually partner with them. We've had a lot of, like region twelve is actually a good example. I think they, I think they had a smaller agency.
Yeah.
A lot of the groups we get is because they just basically like, you know, hold their kid a lot more to offer. So if the relationship is so good, we would still partner with them and just bring them in and still transfer that business to them. So they still, still get that. Um, if that's not something you're interested in doing, then we have other agencies that we partner with that are, they're in Iowa that, um. You just, you know, someone's on Medicare, we just send them over to that person and they work with them directly.
His name's, someone we've known personally that we refer him to.
Well, and we have someone just in Dalsie that is great with Medicare, but I just, I know people have questions and that kind of stuff. And I didn't know if you had someone in your office that, you know.
We, we have someone in our office that knows tons of them other, cause we used to actually do that as well. We used to do individual Medicare things, but just again, we're talking about how specialized stuff is.
Right.
We decided it didn't make sense. It made more sense to use someone, use agencies that actually focus on that. So. I would say you can, you know, use your work. We would just want to make sure they're where the plant and everything's coordinated, but.
We could, we could have a soft hand off and make sure, hey, what was the group plan like? And share all the information with them.
Yeah, we don't really, yeah, we really don't care. I know it's just something that groups need to have, but we work with whoever you want to work with. But if you don't know somebody, we have people we would recommend.
Gotcha.
That's a huge HR.
Okay.
That is very HR department.
Yeah, he's in our department.
And that's, that's what we hear, right? Like it's the city clerk. It's the, you know, there is a HR department. So we really try to be an extension of that department. So that way employees can call us, you know, we'll always tell you, hey, John Smith called me. We won't tell you why John Smith called PHI, but we'll let you know, we're taking care of John Smith.
Yeah.
Most of the time John Smith has already called me and I said, hey, call that.
And there's something, you're against us, you're, but you know, you're looking at that list. So we were with City of Huxley. City of Huxley is like twenty people. We actually got, they're actually too small to get in the trust. We managed to get them in. They've saved a ton of money over the years, but. A group of twenty people, we don't treat them any differently than if it was a group of like, you know, five hundred people. So. Go to city council meetings with them, we do all those different things, you know, even though it's not a very large account. So you'd, you'd have the exact same resources and again, with us too.
Well, insurance is a big deal. The cost of it, the benefit, the, what our employees get from it, it's huge. It's a benefit. And so we wanna make sure that we're spending our money wisely and getting the best for our employees. It's kind of our goal. It sounds like you guys have done this before, so.
Yeah.
How does I do?
I think we'll see.
One of the best. See reports that say we are, we're setting the hell these out or we're on track.
Or you need to make a change.
And we're doing it.
Yes, you're at a great.
The end of the year, you know, be in the same place. If you'd sat in that seat, you'd end up agonizing over this kind of stuff.
Well, it's not, well, it's not gonna get cheaper. It'll, it'll just get more expensive, and you know, your budget's not gonna, you're not gonna suddenly have a gigantic influx of money from the state. Yeah, so you gotta figure out different options. Um.
Unaffordable.
Yes, it's not affordable, but I think, well, I think, kind of in closing, I think the best thing about Home Murphy really is we are independent, right? So we talked, yes, we do have some groups at ISA, like I said, that's not really our favorite option, but we do have some groups that are in there. We have groups at IGCP, but we have a lot of groups that aren't, and I think that that's really is, you know, unique, we're independent, we're gonna get paid the same, we don't really have a bias to go to one thing, and we don't own something to like say, hey. We don't wanna get all our groups in this because, you know, this is, this will make a lot more money for Home Murphy. We don't really operate that way. That's something that consciously as a company you've decided. We used to, for example, you have, you do personal self-funding. We used to actually own a TPA. When I started Home Murphy, we owned it. They basically decided there's a conflict of interest, cause who, which one are you gonna quote every time? The one that we own, right? So we sell a financial services division, we don't have that anymore. So we kind of streamlined, here's where we are, we're independent, and you're independent, you shouldn't own. Too many things or have your own trust. You wanna kind of be impartial, so you really are making the best of it for your clients.
We appreciate that.
Awesome. All right, well, thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, very good information.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, you, you were just here, you were at Harley yesterday, right?
I was in Harley yesterday.
Uh, that'd be bad. Any other questions though, before we go?
Probably a ton of them, but I think we've gathered, you know, a lot of information, so really, really appreciate it.
I know, at least someone has their email addresses, so, actually, I should leave some cards.
Yeah.
One they're on here too, so, but.
Oh, they are. Good, yeah, yeah, okay.
Perfect. Well, I don't have any cards. I haven't, I don't, yeah, I don't. Oh, I do, I give all the way.
If you have any other questions after you guys discuss.
Thanks for coming up in the hole.
Oh, absolutely.
We'll just ask you.
These are the meetings we like, so.
Yeah.
The others, thanks for the dialogue.
Yeah, I'm just, Northern Iowa, it's always cold in there, so this is. What is a cold day?
Do you know any of the relatives of Lamar's?
Steve Roy, Craig Roy, Tom Roy.
All my cousins.
Really?
Yep.
Uh, Steve Roy and I ran track for three years. He's a year younger than I am. Craig Roy was a year ahead of me, yeah. Um, my little, my little brother's best friend is Stephanie and Peyton Bama.
Yeah.
He's related to everybody.
That's awesome. And Tom Roy was a county engineer my whole career. My mom worked for City of Lamar's for forty years, so my parents stayed on well. Went to Gail and went, what a great family.
I figured you, you might, but.
Yeah. Everybody knows Roy, they had one every other class.
Yeah, seven kids maybe?
Seven, eight, seven.
I'd have to go through the list.
A lot.
A lot. Yeah, yeah, so I was really good with Steven high school, yeah.
Cool.
Yep.
Great information.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, so I believe we are at the citizen's input part of our meeting. Thank you, Brad. That one, Terry, what did you have?
So at the last, one of the last meetings, um, maybe about four weeks ago. Ty asked a question about what our DL office does, if you don't take one, pass it, compared to the ones that we were. Um, ranked up against when they were doing the wage comp.
Oh.
So I reached out to all of them, and then Amy was generous enough to get all, in my office, Amy put all this together for us in a spreadsheet. So all of the offices, the things that a driver's license department does.
Oh, this isn't all for me?
No.
No. Sorry, Craig, Ty was, I was.
I was Bogart them. I didn't realize they were all this.
Yeah. So anyway, the, the normal job functions of a driver's license department obviously is to issue. Um, and do written tests, CDL tests, car drives, CDL drives, motorcycle reexams, and then the days and the hours. And if you look on the shaded one for Crawford, we are the only one out of the five above or four above and four below that does all of them. So we do the driver's license and the written, we do the CDL written, and we do the CDL drives, we do the motorcycle, we do the reexam. And we do car drives every day of the week, and none of the other offices do that.
How do you get that information?
I emailed all the treasurers and asked.
Contact them individually and they responded back.
And some of them have it on their website too.
Probably, but, but the, the treasurers, just like I'm sure Terry will tell you, the auditors, we all work very well together. I mean, I can email any of them at any given time and ask for information, and, and somebody's going to answer rapidly.
That's good to know, because when you try to, it's hard to make a comparison if they're doing different things, or doing more things, or doing additional things, or not doing things that other people are doing.
But out of all, all the things that they do, our office does all of them. So I thought that was kind of a nice little FYI for you guys.
So in Jefferson, what does that mean under number of days of car drive scheduled? When it just says five, foreign nationals?
They do.
Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Right. So, so they would do car drives five days a week, but if they're foreign national, then they're only gonna do those on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And, and why they do foreign nationals only Tuesdays and Thursdays, I don't know what their reasoning is behind that. But we do car drives five days a week.
Maybe someone that can communicate with them on that day or something. Translate, yeah, yeah, or, I don't know. That'd be the only thing I can think of, but.
We are the only one, if you look on here, we're the only one that does CDL drives. Um, there's only two others that even do motorcycle drives.
So just the question that comes to my mind then, if you live in Tama County and you want to get a CDL license, where do you have to go?
You have to figure it out. You have to figure out what's closest to you and where you can get in, yeah.
Yep, I have to go to Sting.
To come to Danison.
And we've had some come from far away.
It's crazy, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, yep. And that's why I think even, you know, I know a lot of people disagree with our scheduling, me keeping drivers licenses as a schedule. But with the services we offer, it is so much easier to manage because we have lines all the time. And we still don't turn people away, obviously, if we can help it, but it just really helps with the flow of traffic.
We're fine on that.
Yeah, yeah. What were you gonna ask, Ty?
Well, I was just gonna make a point. I mean, obviously, this is about salary, cause you're, you know, lower than all these other ones that are making more. I just want you guys to, you know, take into one kind of account here that we, you know. The count board is about our elected official. And because you guys got everybody as deputies in your departments, I mean, when we decide on a salary for you, I mean, we just decided on for your whole department in a sense. And, you know, some of your people are probably as busy as the department head, but some others probably aren't, you know, so I mean. And, and, and potentially you're adjusting that by their percentages, but we have zero control over that, so, you know, you don't see where your budget's gonna end up going. Other than what you may have put down on the paper for us to see initially. And that's why it's hard for us to, you know, when we're, when we're sorting this out on the second floor salaries, you know, for your, for your departments here anyway. That's where, that's where our challenge gets when we're deciding that. And obviously, it's historically. You know, this isn't new to this board in particular, even the, the last one before Dave and Craig got here. I mean, where we're lower than these other ones, you know, to try to catch it up. In a sense, is a, a challenge. But then when, you know. The only thing, you know, you, you got the number of staff, I mean, you got seven. And you're the largest staff at both, but because you're doing more, obviously that stands to reason. And when you're doing the things that none of the rest of these are doing. You know, you're, you're probably gonna have more because of that. But that, that's, that's the biggest part. So I don't want you guys to ever think that we don't think you deserve to be paid better than these people.
I just put this together because of that meeting you said, what do the other, with comparing the numbers, what are the other offices doing? So I just wanted to show you what the other offices are doing.
And I appreciate it. That really is great information for us when we're discussing this stuff. You know, if, with, knowledge never hurts anyone. The more we know, the better.
Right.
So with population rank, Play, Iowa and Croft, Play and Iowa are both forty-five, that, that mean they have the.
They have the same amount.
Exact same.
Yeah. That's why, that's why there's five above, or, yeah, that's.
They have the exact same population.
Yeah.
And we, and the, the thing that, you know, I've kind of dicked around with these numbers a little bit too, trying to, uh, even. The population could be just two people, and it puts you in a different category, right? So I was trying to figure out how close in, not that I want you to have to do that, I.
No, I'm not.
No, no, I'm not. I was just gonna say, that's not a, could you go back and see exactly? But they're so close in population, in Iowa, they pay theirs, you know, four thousand, you know, more. And it looks like, I think those, those people should be complaining. But don't we stay open till four thirty, eight to four thirty?
We do, and, and I think maybe that was some confusion with these other ones. The state shuts us down at four o'clock.
Oh.
We still, the, the state, the state shuts the systems down.
Okay.
So we still are in there doing our work.
Got it.
Calling people back, setting up line exams, you know, checking all of that kind of stuff. But the walk-ins or anybody else, we don't schedule after that time.
I just.
That's what that was. And I think maybe that's what these other people, because you can see everybody else has four, two of them.
Yeah.
Well, we, we work until four thirty in there as well, but we don't schedule anything due to the state shutting system.
See why that's jumped out at me too.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you very much. That is all put in one neat little thing that I was trying to figure out. I actually like got on their websites to see what they did and. Uh, tried to call a few of them, and I thought, yeah, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, but you guys did all that for me.
There it is.
This uncovered your whole department, right? So could these be skewed by?
The seven include the treasurer?
Yeah.
Okay.
And does seven include the people that are just on the tax side that don't help with any of the DL stuff?
I just.
Is that fair?
People they've had in their office.
Okay.
Some are cross-trained.
Not just DL.
Some are just.
Some of them might have been confused, so I didn't know. So maybe some of these were skewed, cause well, they didn't include, or maybe they don't do some of the stuff they, on the tax side of it.
I say the, the, the question probably was how many people does the treasurer supervise, you know, so that would be.
Yeah, my question to them was, how many people are in your office? And they'd say, five including me, six including me. I didn't ask how many of them do DL, how many are only tax. I just asked how many.
I was just asking, in case you, you did ask that, and I didn't want to assume that these numbers were.
Because as the department head, I would have the authority to make all seven of my people cross-training into driver's license if I could, you know, if I had time for it. Some of these offices do both. They do motor vehicle and driver's license.
Okay, thank you.
But none of them do CDLs.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right. More information from my way to salary.
I have some extra diamonds. I thought I'd just come in and watch my money grow.
We're working on it. Trying to stretch it as far as we can. I don't know about growing, but trying to rub two paintings together, make a nickel.
We are.
I.
Sure you helped us with so that.
I like them gentlemen from the agency.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think one of the questions that I would have before they leave, maybe, would be to make sure that all of their customer service. Is here in Iowa. Uh, all of us are big, stay in Iowa, do in Iowa, work in Iowa. And that with them having offices in Dallas, Denver, I would want to personally make sure that. If my people, whatever employee needs help, when they call customer service or have that complaint about whatever, if it's suitable.
Mm-hmm. They're talking to somebody in Waukees.
Maybe, miss, I thought they did.
They did say.
You'd be talking to the office in Waukees.
He did say that they're gonna be talking to an office, hopefully in Waukees, with the presentation, with the people in Dallas and Denver.
Come in, grab them quick.
They say the account manager was selected based on the best fit for the city, and then they have this list of people over here. So this is a good.
Mr. Whitmer wanted that.
Ray Wood.
Ray?
Yes, sir.
I see you, Ray.
Listening to your presentation, what I asked the board was, anytime customer service is called, that is in your office in Waukees?
Yes.
There's no Dallas, no Denver?
No.
So everything, any question that would be answered would be from Iowa.
Anybody assigned to the city of Robert County would be in our office, directly reported that.
Okay.
Yep.
He had that question, as long as you guys were still here, we didn't let him. We were.
That's a, that's a good question, because it is always a concern of our, our local taxpayers that their money stays as local as possible.
Yeah, but it's still Iowa at least, so that's not, if you're telling me.
Well, I would like to see, I guess I'll leave it this way, and I, I, my son's on the city council, and one of the things that I've taught him is. You stay in town, you can stay in town and buy your product. But if you're wanting to save money. You have to do that in today's world also.
Yeah.
So, and he's taken that and grown, done very well with it also. So that's what I was concerned with, if the product that you're selling is all right here in the state.
Yes.
The answer is yes. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I assume you're, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, thanks. Thanks, Rafe. That was a good.
Otherwise, how was your road?
My road sucked.
I'm glad I asked.
Join the club.
Okay.
Maintainer finally got out to us yesterday. So if it hadn't have been for Tom Bruce, I wouldn't have been able to get into town at all. So, I mean, it wasn't as bad as one forty-one. But it was still drifted shut both sides of my house. I only expect, I'm one of the people that, I don't expect you guys to rush out, especially, I was surprised to see anybody on my, like, thirteen day yesterday, if they pushed it. I think they pushed it today. Did employees work yesterday?
Yes.
Yeah. I've been playing their road.
They worked all week.
Well, they didn't work Saturday, cause they couldn't come out Saturday.
They worked till, till they got.
They didn't make it out to my house then.
Unless they couldn't see because of the whiteout conditions, then Paul pulled them.
I, I understand the dilemma, because as you know, I had a truck in town and I had babysit, because with those temperatures, if you don't babysit them. I would rather have something I can work on and not have the wind blow up my butt at forty mile, forty mile, forty degree level.
What's diesel fuel all over your hands?
Yes.
Freezing your fingers off.
Right. And it's batting up the pump fuel in the truck at forty below, and your hands are generating the heat through the pump. But, you know, from what I've seen, you guys, everyone did an excellent job at participating in this wonderful. Uh, pile of weather that we had this weekend, which is, we haven't seen that. So if you guys can get on top of it, the way you did, I don't have any complaints about.
Yeah.
I had to just come up and see her, cause somewhere in this snowbank is my driver's license.
And you need that.
You're absolutely right. If I had the drift plug, maybe I wouldn't have lost it.
Maybe it'll still show up in the wind somewhere.
But no, I just wanted to come up and watch, and I know the majority of you both up here, I don't want to scare you, but it's sitting in our conversation, but.
No.
I'm always amazed that people not, we have fifteen percent of the people in registered Republicans go to caucus. Fifteen percent. You got one person in here from, from, from all of your constituents that come up and sit. That part disturbs me.
It should.
We never, we're always happy to.
We do our, we do our public hearing for our budget.
Yeah. Zero people.
I've been here a long time, and I've, I've, I don't know how to say this. I've struck a little fear in the some of the past supervisors. But with that being said, it wasn't ever my intention. I understand your guys' dilemma. One of the things I, when you guys talk about them numbers like what she's comparing. The board usually has an idea to compare ourselves to Potawatomi. Uh, Boavista, or whatever Des Moines is in. And my personal opinion, for the board to. Compare themselves to those numbers, those numbers aren't. compare themselves to those numbers, those numbers aren't apples to oranges.
Not even similar.
Apples to bananas.
Yeah.
They might even be poor.
It it it's it's more of apples to tomatoes.
Yeah.
And so, numbers, to me, and all of you know this because you're either in farming or trucking, a lot of people are gonna hate me for this, but numbers can be skewed to fit the agenda. And I just hope, at the end of the day, and at all of you are, I voted for all of you, so that's glad I looked at it. Obviously, you guys got good brains inside them heads that understand all that. And that's what I like, just as I said, you know, the the county employees did a wonderful job yesterday for what they had to work with or this weekend. And it's never easy to fight a snowstorm. And as I told Dustin, it isn't gonna matter. I can guarantee you, every one of you got a phone call from at least one person yipping your butt for something that you guys weren't doing fast enough. But praise is never there, and I just want to say thank you for that. And it goes to you, because you do a hefty job. I don't know if I like you, if you're gonna come in. I used to come in and free food Friday. If they didn't have food, I'd bring food over here to everybody, and I was telling her about it. Then I went back over here and I said something to them about it. And they were like, and then she come over and kind of jumped on my piece.
We got food today, but none of us have even touched it. I guess it was warm when we got it, but
How do you guys feel about this weekend? I guess is the way. Do you, do you think everything went as smooth as it could?
I do. I do. With the whiteout conditions, uh, you know, you're out there shoving snow and working and they're just, you know, can't see, it's not safe. And yeah, ideally, they could have worked all night, but when you've got whiteout conditions and you know what you did is gonna just blow shut again, might as well go take some rest and get back after it. And they, I think they did a heck of a job.
It may not be common knowledge, Ray, but a lot of, there's the guys, there was guys that actually stayed in the county sheds.
County sheds.
Because they got off and it was hard to see, and they knew they'd have to get right back on it at four in the morning or six in the morning, whatever time Paul sent them on. And so, I mean, that's kind of a bone to be on.
It is. And one of the things that I would say about that is you know, you and I really know what it's like out there. With that being said, I've always said this, snowplow drivers, I don't care how much money they make, they're not making enough. And especially in today's age, where even for whatever reason, people aren't paying attention and looking at whatever else they're looking at. And look at the number, fortunately, on the state, state patrol, there was no fatalities this weekend, which just amazes me. Because from two oh one to up to Cedar Rapids, there was fifty cars in the ditch when I left Monday, last Friday, Monday, Friday, whenever it was. So with that amount of people, nobody died in state Iowa, always amazes me. Because last year, we averaged almost one a day, actually over one a day. I have a, I have a, I have a problem with, and they changed it, they had their their motto was zero fatalities, and you're looking at numbers that are un-accessible. You're never gonna get that. And what you and I've seen, people are stupid. They're they're still doing ninety mile an hour in a snowstorm.
Wow.
Ninety-two, I think, was what we seen on
It's just, just amazing.
Ninety-two mile an hour, guy got pulled over for
Yeah, ninety-two.
Yeah.
Insane.
I actually sent Steven Old to text about that, yeah.
And it's just, it's our mentality in this
I didn't know.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
But no, I just want to come up, say hi to everybody. I haven't seen you in a while, Jean.
It's been a while.
Seen him for a while.
Yeah.
Hello?
Nice to see some interest in what we're up to.
Yeah. You can always zoom if you miss us.
I was checking that out. I might be able, I I might call the office for that to watch it going down the road, but
You can listen and
Sorry, do you go ahead?
And and you can, even after you get home, go in and look at it and and watch it later. A lot of people send me a text at five o'clock on a Wednesday and say, hey, I'm listening to the meeting, you know.
I don't think anyone's gonna be offended when I say this.
Yeah, I know. I'm not.
All of us are older folks in that Zoom chat is like
It's handy though, uh, you know, and back in COVID is when that became so popular that you didn't want to
But it's just like Mr. Osberg said, you know, to see somebody taking interest is is gonna, and say thank you, and I mean that wholeheartedly. Everybody's easy to throw out the negative, and nobody wants to praise when you've done something decent. Or even, I I have a new saying. You know what makes me a superstar? All I gotta do is get and go to work every day because there are a lot of people ain't doing that either.
You are a superstar. We will pass that all on to Paul and his crew because they seriously
I just, I seen Chuck come down here, and it's, that's a tough gig to keep everybody happy.
Yeah, it it's, and considering how many people, we kept pretty happy. Most people just wondered when, you know, not any really complaint as to how how are things going and uh we did, I think we did a good job. I really did.
I will say, you know, we don't, like Washington or even Des Moines have their polls that tell them how how their people are supposedly happier than that. We we really don't know what the people are thinking, you know, we've talked to them on the street, but I mean, it's nice to know, you know, if people like what 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 we're working on that they like or don't like, or, you know, I mean, even if it sounds like it's a pretty negative bite at us, it still helps us work on our decision-making process.
So you should probably talk to Mr. Old about anything, because he doesn't really care about that with me.
Yeah.
Well, we we had that same struggle of trying to make sure our voice is heard in Des Moines.
Yeah.
I look at it this way, I don't care if you're Democrat or Republican, whether you're sitting on this one or if you're sitting in the state house. Mr. King actually did a deal here before he left office. One of the things was that they want, they were talking about making eighty a toll roll. Do you remember that, Mr. Osberg? And Mr. King didn't have time for me. I'd seen him up in Oval, but Cubby's, and he didn't have time for me. I got into him a little bit, and I probably got into him a little hard because his intern had to step in between us, but I look at it this way, I don't have time like you guys got time. I'm out here banging the boards, doing all, it's always amazing to me when we have meetings, uh coffee deals at two o'clock in the afternoon on a Wednesday. I don't know any other person that's doing that unless we're older or maybe farming. But as regular people that are out banging the boards, that's a hard time to get to go to that kind of stuff. And I can never understand that philosophy. You know, even Tuesday nights for Dustin, that's still, there's a ton of stuff going on for everybody. But even still talking about the fifteen percent went to the caucus. Fifteen percent of the registered voters, Republican voters in Iowa went to the caucus. That was it, fifteen percent. And it was down from twenty sixteen. They had a hundred and eleven thousand people come in, were registered Republicans for caucus. Twenty sixteen was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. What can we do to fix that issue?
That's a good question.
That's a good question. You shouldn't ask a question for the answer.
Campaign finance reform. Get, you know, that's the thing is
Make the votes count. People are just tired and they're, what
That's what people asked yesterday was like, why would, why should I go? It don't make no difference anyway.
I think that's a lot of it.
Actually, we talked about that at Charter Oaks Copper, at our caucus for their precinct. We talked about campaign finance reform, which is one of my favorite topics of mine here. So, but that's, that, I think that's what brings the voters up. You know, you think about back in in twenty twenty and twenty sixteen, you know, I mean, everybody thought that they were gonna make a bigger difference by getting out there. And and I think to some degree, you know, Republicans believe that they did. So that's, the the things that are on the ballot, you look what Colorado did. I mean, they put marijuana on there and they drew a ton of people to the ballot, to the poll. So I mean, I think them are the things that draw people. Um, yeah, the cold bothered, but I think there was a few normal, you know, I don't, Virgie wasn't there, and she's typically a caucus goer, you know, but I think so. Some of the older people probably that, you know, may have a health challenge and didn't go out in this, you know, I'm not gonna say I blame them, you know. But uh, we had a bunch of new people there last night too. I mean, I was very impressed. We had, there was one young man in the front row earlier in the day, that day his grandpa called me, I think it's grandpa, maybe it's an uncle, called me and uh asked how old you gotta be to come to this. And I said, we gotta be eighteen before the November election. That little guy was sitting right in the front row at the Charter Oak precinct meeting. You know, I mean, so I I was pretty impressed with those kind of things. We haven't seen a lot of that. It's always been the same old people always there. You know, your political junkies at a caucus. But there was, there was several younger people there.
I worked the resident before they came in and registered. We had a lot of people that uh were registering for the first time.
Yeah, Jean was doing that, so she was busy as heck.
Had a few people that were changing their parties and uh people that were just seemed a little more more interested. I ran into a couple of that in Sleswig, and they'd never really come before, but they just wanted to start being a part of it and brought a little child with them to start, you know, so I thought that was, so
I think I told her, I lost four of my best friends yesterday.
Here we go.
Donald, Nikki, Ron, and Bevah. Nobody's calling me today.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know.
And as I asked her, how they give my number? Are you guys giving the number?
No.
So Verizon's the only other
I gave, I gave them yours.
I didn't really vote for you either.
Have you changed your number? Otherwise, I'll start calling you.
No, I haven't, I haven't. No, I haven't changed my number. You you can get ahold of me through City Councilman Logan. He loves to talk to folks.
I have called him on a regular basis, uh, just to see how he's doing, so.
But, you know, and I understand why they do that, but at the end of the day, we have fixed what we got going on here somewhere, and it always starts here, or city council before it starts state house or federal law. And as I've said, one of the things, I don't know how you guys feel about term limits, but everybody talks about term limits. Term limits start here at the state. They don't start on the federal level. They start here at the state. Nobody's gonna lose their cushy gig at the state if they start talking term limits because all them cushy guys lose their gig.
Like Ty and I said, you can talk term limits all you want, but as Dave pointed out, when he was running for senate, he had guys throwing money at him and they were throwing money at the Republican candidate too.
Right.
So it was a win-win for them. So until you get that campaign finance reform under control,
Yeah.
it don't matter if you've been in there your first year, if you've been in there forty years, you know, the money's falling, whoever's going into the
How much did we spend? Do you, do any of you know how much we spent on twenty twenty for just the presidential campaign?
You did, I'd be the, yeah, say it's
How much? How much was it?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
Twenty billion dollars. Twenty billion dollars for a hundred, for a three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar job.
Four hundred thirty-six dollars.
These two knuckleheads, and I don't care how you wanna call them, if you like them, I'm sorry, I offended you. But these two knuckleheads, we got out of three hundred and thirty million people, this is the best that we can come up with. Yeah?
I just didn't send you. I uh, I would tell you, what really alerted me, when I went up and lobbied against the E L D for, in particular for the livestock.
Okay, yeah.
And you started talking to them, you could see that the A T A and Big Trucking was financing the whole damn thing, and when it was to help them basically push us smaller people down and make us have to do the same thing they're doing, but they got the, it it, they said, well, it makes the system more No, it don't. They got the competitive advantage already.
That is my
And now you're making it, giving them more advantage. So that's what you see, and that's why I became more like Kyle said, about campaign finance reform.
Just hold off, then?
That's what's going on.
Well, a prime example of that, however you like them, however you don't, doesn't rhyme, but it's it's what the Republican Party did to Mr. King by taking all his money away and giving it to Andy. I I don't care how you feel about whatever it is, it doesn't matter. The principle of the deal was they they took the money away from him and gave it to him. And every time somebody says it's a fair reelection, I somewhat laugh about it that hard.
But where do we start to fix it?
I don't know. It's twenty twenty-four though, because we got a whole bunch of, we got a whole bunch of smart people somewhere.
Yeah.
But the people making the rules are the people that are gonna benefit from the rules. So how do you make them make rules that are gonna disadvantage them? So
I have to wrap the meeting, I need to interrupt, but I just wanted to tell you guys, thank you for the call that you made on Friday to show our people that they're important to you by closing
Absolutely. That was a no-brainer.
What that meant to people.
That's, that was a no-brainer, actually.
Wonderful, and thank you.
Everybody got home safe. That, well, when you called them, flowers off the city streets, time to get your place home.
Right.
Yeah.
Ding.
Right. Now we have employees to come to work on Tuesday, doesn't that
So it's all good. Thank you.
You guys called, you called the guys in the block?
No, no, no.
Paul does, the Paul does.
No, Paul does. And we got a message that we were actually here at a meeting on Friday when it all, and we got a message that the city was pulling their truck off the road and the county was gonna take a break because, and so we let our employees go home because we
They did, so they could get
Yeah, so
Get there.
So we did that, so.
That's, that's good. I, that's, there there was that one time a gentleman called me trucking, hey, Ray, how you doing? I'm in the middle of snowstorm at midnight, and I'm like, what are you doing calling me? You're supposed to be home in bed. You gotta go to work tomorrow. Just wanna make sure you're safe.
Yeah.
You know, that meant more to me than anything else on earth.
Yep, yep. So I've been told I gotta call the meeting to an end because we have to do a recess, yeah, because we're gonna come back and we're gonna work on budgets all afternoon.
If you're needing a map, I'm on back.
No, I got it, I got it.
We're gonna get back to give that one o'clock, and uh you can see just how much fun that's gonna be this afternoon, because
I gotta go down to the sheriff's and
Oh.
And I'm surprised Eric is already buzzing my phone, you know, actually.
If you see smoke from the courthouse this afternoon, it's just us. If you see smoke coming out of the courthouse, it's just us.
I feel bad for that part of the team because, you know, at the end of the day, how are you supposed to, how are you supposed to come up with money and that, so? But at the same time, you're gonna piss off somebody by coming out for it in front of like
It's a fine line to walk.
For for me, sometimes I'm wondering, why do you ask for so much, you know, when you don't make that, or, why don't you just come and ask us what you really need instead of
Yeah, I'll be here until we're at eight o'clock.
Seeing you.
Thank you.
Budget.
All right, this meeting is in recess. We're in recess.
Yep.
I thought I walked out of the street.
All right, Jim, I'll get home again.